All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the Monday, December 17th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Stoddard, are you calling the roll today?
I believe I am, yes.
Okay. Let's do it.
That's all we got.
Mr. Odisca.
I am here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Ms. Dietz.
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Grassner.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Quintero.
Here.
We're all here. Terrific. For the adoption of the agenda, I would like to move Items 6 A and B to after Item 7, so that we can just hear from the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, about the economic development project, and then we'll hear about the fellows' property afterwards, if that is okay. They're already at the table. Can I get a motion to switch those items?
I'll move the agenda as amended or changed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Terrific. That was unanimous for your detailed notes, Mr. Stoddard.
Thank you.
All right. You going to kick it off here? All right. Great.
So, for the Planning Commission tonight, there is a presentation by the EYA and the rest of the development team for the 10-acre site over at West Falls Church. There is no formal application that's been submitted at this time, so this is an informational presentation and discussion. The application, as you all know, covers approximately 10.3 acres up at the West Falls Church site. Currently, that area has the existing high school on it. In the timing section, you'll see how this is all going to work out, but I'll get to that last. Just in summary, lines 36 through 51 of the staff report highlight the expected program of uses, the approximate program of uses, including a range of housing types, senior housing, for sale condos, multifamily apartments, affordable housing units, and then a range of other uses as well: hotel, class A office space, civic space, event space, and I'll leave the details of that for the presentation. Staff analysis is limited at this time. As I said, there is no formal application. The timing section I do want to talk about a little bit with the Planning Commission starts on line 171 in the staff report. As you can see in the staff report, there are multiple threads that are coming together in order to make this project successful and get it to the voting deadlines that it needs to get to. The West Falls Church Economic Development Site, the ultimate goal for this is to get it to vote for the special exception entitlement phase by the end of May, May 28, 2019, and of course, it's going through an appropriate public hearing process that includes referrals to the courts and commissions. Planning Commission and council will have two readings on it. The zoning map amendment was, there was a positive second reading on the zoning map amendment, so at this point, the future land use map and the zoning map are set to allow the kind of development that's being discussed tonight. High school construction, site plan submitted, we've come for the Planning Commission shortly, and then they're expecting to start construction in July 2019. The start of construction on the high school is contingent on acceptance of a development application for the West Falls Church site. And then the other thing that the Planning Commission, that would be within the Planning Commission's purview is the small area plan for this area going all the way to the WNOV, where the WNOV crosses over Route 7 or West Street. The idea is to restart that smaller area planning process in March, prior to a final vote on the West Falls Church Economic Development Site. The idea is to provide context for that conversation and that vote, but the adoption of a smaller area plan would happen after any action on the West Falls Church project to allow the smaller area plan to accommodate what is approved through public consent.
All right. Terrific.
All right. With that, I'll turn it over for more information about the West Falls Church discussion. Oh, you need to announce?
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to give a presentation of the Planning Commission. Off of the record, my name is Evan Goldman. I'm a Vice President of Development and Acquisitions at EYA, and we have a few other members with us here today.
Murphy Antoine, an architect and planner with Torty Gallus and Partners.
And then behind us, we have Laura Schonfeld from P&amp;Hoffman, Kelly Whelan, and Wyndham Robertson from EYA, and Karen White from Walter Phillips, local in the city. Probably know her best of all. So, really happy to be here and appreciate your time. We're very excited about the project. We've been working on this for the past year, and we're really excited to be accepted by the city. So, what I'll talk through today is a little bit about what you probably have already, some of you have already seen, and, you know, and answer as many questions as possible as we start preparing our SAE application. The Falls Church Gateway Partners team is, consists of three development companies, real estate development and owners, I should say. So, EYA, been around for about 25, 26 years in the DC market. We're residential developers largely, and we create kind of neighborhoods all throughout the metro area. We were involved in kind of the original Clarendon Market Commons project in Arlington, in Park Potomac, in Montgomery County. Personally, I, before coming to EYA, had worked on the Pike and Rose project up on Rockville Pike. We also have P&amp;Hoffman as our partner. They've got a, not only a great residential background, but also office and hotel as well. And so, that says Matt Steenhuck. Shawn Seaman is the head of development. He's been more engaged and the person you've been seeing in meetings as of late, and Laura. And then Regency, we brought onto the team because they're a national company with really good contacts and relationships with major national retail tenants, which, while we hope there'll be a good portion of the retail, that will end up being local retail, we do want some national local retail as well, and so their relationships there is really help, are really helpful. They're also a public company, so they have access to equity to finance the retail portion of the project. On our team is locally Dave Lasso from Baskin Jackson and Lasso, Walter Phillips, our civil engineer, Torty Gallus, one of the top planners and architects in the region, Gore of Slade on the traffic, who worked with the city on the traffic study already, and then Clark Builders Group to round out the team. So, in front of you right now is the plan, and this is what we had submitted in our resubmission back in August, and I'll talk through it a little bit. We are modifying it slightly as we're kind of updating and refining our plan, and so you'll see something slightly different in the SAE application, but generally consistent with this. And there were some key planning principles. For some of you have probably heard this already, so this may get boring if this is the third or fourth time some of you have heard this, but to be consistent, I'll repeat myself. So, the site obviously sits at Haycock and Route 7. There were some key planning issues that we were dealing with on the site. First of all, and probably one of the most critical, is the slope of the site, and so it's a little hard, probably don't recognize it as much with the big high school sitting on it, but there's about 26 feet of grade from Haycock up to that center retail street, which is almost two and a half stories of a building, so it's really a hill. And so, that really forced us to place the retail street where we're showing it on this plan. Originally, we had thought about a retail street that cut east to west from Haycock to the school and kind of brought people from the federal realty property to the entrance to the schools, but with that slope, there wouldn't be, wouldn't be able to do outdoor cafe seating, you wouldn't be, it wouldn't be as comfortably handicapped accessible. It'd be more difficult to attend it from a retail perspective as the grade of the site is so steep. And so, that helped us come up with this idea, this really major retail gesture on that street that you're seeing, and that also, I think Torty Gallus really came up with this grand idea of this major plaza or park space that runs up the center. And there's a few reasons for that. We want people, as they drive, walk, or bike on Route 7, to recognize that they've arrived at a certain location that's different and unique and distinct from other development along Route 7, to see that there's some activity going on deep within the site, to see that there's people gathered in open spaces, that there's retail, and that width of the street really helps to announce the development on such a large, wide, very fast road as Route 7. And so, that's part of the reason. And secondly, it really creates a center commons, not just for the project, but for the community to gather, and that, you know, brings together the retail on both sides, but also creates these little kiosk buildings in the center that can, that'll make sure that they're attracting people to the park spaces. So, number one was making sure we have the retail street right and dealing with the grade. Second was pointing the development towards the metro, and so, the West Falls Church Metro is one of the best and probably less, least utilized assets of the city, even though it's in the county, and so making sure that it was very clear where the metro was for somebody who was trying to find it, it'd be easy for them to find it, whether they're walking, biking, staying at a hotel, driving. And so, setting up this street that will continue north towards the metro is really important, and whether we end up being the developers, the Virginia Tech parcel, or someone else does, or, you know, we end up being the developers on the Womata parcel or not, that gesture will be really important, and you can imagine that future development will continue with that concept, and we'll show you an image of where we've already planned for that. So, that was a second major planning construct. A third one was how we were going to interface with the high school, and so, I'm sure you had all seen the prior version of the high school plan, when there was a big field in that location separating the development from the school, and while we were figuring out how to work around it, we never loved it, because it really was this big barrier between the development and the school, and it also was so big that it precluded us from putting a grid of streets in place that would connect all of those streets together. And so, when the schools chose the current team and modified their plan to this idea with the big plaza in front of the high school, we really loved it, and in very short time period, I think we had two weeks maybe, or three, we completely revised our plan, so that our second submission in August was this plan that you're looking at here, that really thinks about how the development interacts with the school. And so, part of that is the plaza itself, and the way we've thought about the backside, which is also a front of the hotel and civic building. I'll talk about that in a minute. And then, secondly, the garage space there as well, and how that can become something that celebrates the school from a marketing perspective, from an art perspective, from a branding perspective, and not a barrier, or not, not a, kind of a surface-level parking lot, which isn't the best use of urban land. The other construct that's really important here is phasing, and so, there's been many projects built over time where you get one building, and then it sits for a few years, and one day, you get a second building, and then, you know, it's 10 years before you get the sense of place or the retail, and the project finally arrives and lives up to what you had expected. It's pretty critical to deliver that sense of place all up front in Phase 1, and so there's, you know, if you think of city center in DC, what happened with the wharf, they're great examples of doing something on a major scale where you really transform the neighborhood up front in that first phase, and that takes a certain critical mass of retail, so that the retail can thrive and be successful. It takes a certain critical mass of open space and linear frontage, and enough walkability that people feel like they can come, park, or bike here, walk around for a few hours, eat, hang out in a park. And so, this development, by having all this come up at once, delivers that sense of place and excitement in one phase. In order to do that, and not to deliver, you know, 1,000 residential units in one big phase, which also isn't something the city wanted, we came up with this idea of breaking up all the blocks into different uses, and so, none of them are competing with each other. You know, an office building across from an apartment, across from senior housing, across from a condo, hotel, all of those can absorb in the market at their own pace that's appropriate for them, without competing with each other. And so, they can also be financed in a similar manner, so that the people giving us the equity and the debt for the project aren't worried about their project competing with other projects. So, that large Phase 1 is the kind of last construct that we paid a lot of attention to in designing the site. The project is, right now, what's proposed is the bottom right is approximately 300 apartments, smaller units, largely studios, one bedrooms and twos, some two bedrooms. We expect it to be kind of a younger demographic, given the proximity to the metro, and that will hopefully encourage people to get out of their cars and take the metro as often as possible, even if they have a car for weekend shopping. Across from that is an office building, a minimum of 125,000 square feet. Just to the north of that is a senior housing building that we've assumed is about 150,000 feet, and we're talking to potential senior housing partners at this point, who are in that range of 150 to 225,000 square feet, depending on how many units they want to do there. Once again, to the north of that is probably the most exciting building, is the hotel and civic, civic center, and essentially, on the hotel itself is, is kind of a nice select service hotel with a, we've, we have some brands that were in RFQ that I can't quite talk about yet, but hopefully, we'll be able to shortly, but it's a nice hotel, will be a nice addition for the city, and then it's attached to a music venue, and so that civic music space is retail on the first floor and a music venue on the second floor with an outside deck that can have music as well. And so, the concept there is for the hotel to have access to this event space, for the city to be able to rent out an event space that's large enough to attract, you know, 500 people for a sit-down dinner, but then that space isn't just sitting empty most of the year, it's being used for music events, it's being used for programming. On the first floor of that building facing the high school, on that plaza, is where the music school that we've been talking to would go, and so, we're negotiating a letter of intent with the music school. They would be, they like the synergy of being underneath this music venue, they would partner together, and so that allows the music school to save a little bit of money by not having to build its own large recital space, because they can use that music venue as needed, and then they would have a smaller recital space inside. They also have a potential opportunity of working with the high school and middle school across the street, which have some spaces as well, and as part of that, we thought about, you know, what does that high school plaza want to be, and is there a theme within that plaza that's music-oriented? Are there, you know, Saturdays where some of the kids are out playing in the park, music in the park, or opening up, you know, windows and people can hear their music lofting out into the open space? I think there's some really cool opportunities at the ground level for how the music can actually interact with the school itself and the plaza there, and that's part of placemaking. It's, you know, bringing people to a space to see something really cool. And then finally, on the upper right, we have some condo parcels and a future office building as well. The, in total, Phase 1 is approximately 925,000 square feet, so it's pretty big, and it'll be about $330 million, so it's a hefty investment, which will be great for the city. This image kind of shows the potential for a larger project here beyond the city site, so the city site's fantastic. If there's coordination between Virginia Tech and Womata, there's an opportunity for something larger, and so this is 35 acres. Give you a sense of scale, it's roughly the size of Mosaic, it's, it's pretty big. And so, with that in mind, you can see how we're continuing that retail main street, I can, oh, the cursor works good. You can see how we can kind of continue the retail main street all the way up to this intersection, and then cross it with retail as well as it goes back towards the metro. This is very preliminary, and, you know, we don't know ultimately where the metro's going to go from a design, planning perspective, but the design that we've selected for the high school sets it up for this type of development. We are one of two teams that have been selected for Virginia Tech, and so, we do hope in the next six months to have more information as to whether we'll be the developer there, and the concept there is kind of student and faculty housing on the left side, and then academic buildings on the right side, and hopefully, a bigger investment in this campus, along with retail on the ground floor. This is an overall perspective of the site, and this architecture was a little bit of a placeholder. We, you know, we haven't gotten into full design of the buildings yet, but it gives you a sense of scale of some of the buildings, the concept of green roofs. You can see the outdoor space next to the music venue, so this is the music venue here with the outdoor deck to the left of it, that kind of spills music over out onto the main street. The hotel is behind that, excuse me, and then senior housing and office as you go out towards Route 7, which is back here, the little kiosk buildings in the park. Whenever you show kiosks in a rendering, they have to be ice cream, so. That's required, and so what you're seeing is ice cream. But that, once again, ice cream is actually a perfect use for these types of spaces, because it brings people to the space.
Coffee.
Coffee is also great, exactly. You want something where...
Or wine. You're right.
Wine is good too, right? Exactly, as long as they don't run into the street. But no, it's, they're great uses, because they bring people there regularly. It's something you go on a regular basis, you'll sit outside, you go as a family, and one of the ideas for this development that Regency, our retail partner, has thought about is, you know, family-oriented retail. We've got the high school, we've got the middle school. A lot of retail companies would kind of fear the high school and middle school, that these kids are going to be rambunctious, and, you know, they're not going to spend money in the stores. I think Regency saw it in a different way, that Falls Church is a very family-oriented place, and so to the extent they can pick up on that and make this the place for families in the city, there actually could be the right type of retail mix and a benefit for everybody, and that could, that would include restaurants and coffee shops, a grocery store, and other users. On the left of the block, you can't really see it, but those are the condo and apartment And just, you know, from a planning perspective, it's probably important to know, this rendering is not showing it, but these streets will be set up in a way that will work from a fire access perspective, so there's bike lanes to the right, in the right portion of those drivelanes, so you have a 11-foot driveline, four-foot bike lane on each of, in each direction, and then you would have spaces throughout that site where it would be curbless, and so if the fire truck needed 20 feet, they can come in and put down their support...
Outriggers.
Outriggers, I can never remember that word. It's terrible. They can put down their outriggers and set up in case there's a fire, and so that's a kind of a neat trick we've done in other jurisdictions, where you can kind of solve, you know, not have to have 20 feet of paving and still make it work for, for the fire. So, that is the intent there. This is an image looking from inside the park space itself. It's a beautiful day, it's about 75 degrees. Everybody's happy.
No rain?
There's no rain in the forecast, the birds are flying, exactly.
The sky does look cloudy.
But it's that nice cloudy, it's the Heat Island benefit cloudy. So, anyway, but what you're seeing in the distance on the left is the music venue again, and as I said, that's probably the most special space in the project, because it's a four-sided building, and it addresses both the school as well as the open and public This is, we'll get into more detail on this. For now, this is, gives you a sense for this idea of special paving patterns inside of that park space, large enough green areas where you can have, you know, yoga in the park, or movie night, or, you know, large gatherings. We've designed the site so that the, this part of the project could be closed down to traffic, and the garages will still operate from the other streets, so you can have arts festivals, you can have, you know, citywide festivals here as well. At Pike and Rose, we did a really cool Oktoberfest every, every October, which was, the restaurants would each come out onto the street and have food, and vendors, and homemade beers, and other really fun stuff. So, there's the ability to really make this a special space or kind of a public living room for the city, and we'll obviously work through, at site plan level, work through this in detail with all of you, but that, that concept of this being a special space with raised intersections and really pretty and attractive and safe for pedestrians. Yeah?
What is the, on the top right, what are they? This is showing the retail?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. So, right, so this is showing kind of the red areas are showing all the frontages, red and brown, this is the grocery, all the frontages that have retail, so most of the street frontages are retail-oriented. This doesn't show the music venue and the hotel on the backside here, sorry, the music school, which would also be retail-oriented, and even where there is not retail, the spaces will be treated in a way that feels residential or feels, you know, appropriate as it addresses the street.
Just those, noticing it's fronting 7 on that.
Yeah, exactly. So, this portion, we'd have to see if there's, given the new design and fitting the garage that works for the school, I don't, we'll see if this piece still fits, but the idea is to have retail wrapping all the way around there.
I think some places would work to be on Route 7.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah. In fact, our, our problem is, one of our developments was on Maple Avenue Pearson. That retail, which was very nice, was hard to fill, because people felt like it was not close enough to 29.
Right, exactly. I know exactly what you're talking about. Yeah, that is, so, and that's part of the reason we made that really big, major gesture with the main street here, because we, we need the retail to be successful as you go deeper and away from 7, but we also recognize that the visibility on 7 is huge.
Brings people in.
Well, and if you put some sort, some of these kids have quite a bit of minus 7.
Right.
If you put a Sephora, it will make money.
It's so funny. That's exactly what my daughters would say. I have a, I have a 13-year-old and a 10-year-old daughter, and they love Sephora.
I took one of our Girl Scout trips to Manhattan just overnight, and we went to five different Sephora's.
I bet.
We didn't want to, but they just kept saying, "There's another one, let's just go in this one too."
Yeah, so it sounds like we should put Sephora on the list of potential tenants here.
I'm just telling you.
And also, one of the things I immediately think of is our kids being able to get jobs. Our businesses here in the city have been extremely generous, giving our kids jobs, particularly restaurants and everything, and it's worked out so beautifully, and, you know, gives them an opportunity. I don't know where these kids find the time to work on a job, because they're just crazy busy always, but I just think it's wonderful.
I agree, yeah. It's a good life lesson. I started working when I was 14, so.
It's nice and safe, they can walk, they're close to home. Awesome.
Cool. So, yeah, but most, the idea is most of those ground levels to be, ground level spaces to be activated, so people feel safe when they're walking the street, there's lights building out onto the sidewalk. You can also see that we have different heights for the buildings, and so even though there's a 15-story height limit here, the vast majority of the buildings will be below that, there might be one or two that get close to that, and, and most of them won't be. This is a slight update on the plan, and so, obviously, this will one day be as pretty as the other plan, but you can get a sense from a conceptual perspective, some of the things we're doing is kind of breaking this block into four instead of three. It kind of allows us to do these twin residential buildings that can be phased. The senior housing, this is an idea, this may or may not get approved, but the idea of kind of hiding the garage with some senior housing is a possibility, although the image that I'll show you of the Mustang on that side of the garage fronting the park is also kind of cool, so we'll see what happens there. It makes it a little bit of a less efficient building itself, but it does provide for views into the park space, which is really nice. And that garage is not something that has been approved yet, the school board is considering it as an opportunity. It may end up being surface parking, and if it is, our parking would go bullet grade. This is, we brought in these images, and this was really Torty Gallus did a bunch of research. The concept for the garage, and part of the reason we're excited about it, is to use it as art, and kind of art spaces, public art, in coordination with the school, and so, you know, whether it's banners that get placed on the building, or it's literally, physically art on the building, or it's ceramic tile art on the building, we think there's a way to incorporate really pretty imagery on the garage itself, and so you're spending your money on the placemaking versus the, you know, the garage structure, and, you know, there are places, my kids go to a school where every year, the graduating class, I think the 11th graders actually, do a ceramic mural that gets added on to, and it talks about current events that happened during that year, but it also always has a theme that's relative to the school. So, you could see something here where the school, we work with the schools, and on a regular basis, they're kind of adding on to the art on a continuous annual basis, and so the garage really becomes part of the school, and you come back 10 years later and you look for your mural, or the mural that your class may have dedicated. So, that's one concept. Can be done with banners, too. It doesn't have to necessarily be direct art on the building, which could be easier for installation, and then, you know, Torty Gallus took this initial idea of, you know, do you do something that really celebrates the brand of the school itself, with, you know, the Mustang fronting the high school plaza, and, and for Mary Ellen Henderson School, their mascot as well, and that really announces the schools. There was, there were two things we've heard a little bit about. One is that both schools want their distinct brands to really be clear, that it's not just one building, it's two different campuses, two buildings on a campus, and then, secondly, this idea of really announcing the school entrance on 7, so, you know, to the extent we have a tower element, we have something really big that everybody knows where the school is, it can help with wayfinding, it can help with the school's image. So, anyway, so those are some very, very early preliminary ideas that we want, you know, feedback from over time. And then getting to the last few slides are about placemaking, and, you know, I think this was, one of the main reasons I think our team ultimately won was that we had a lot of experience in placemaking, and there was a desire for this, what we had heard from the city was this desire for this to be a space and a place and really great, and not just another project, and so that takes coordination, it takes planning, and so, all of us, EYA, my experience at Federal Realty, P&amp;Hoffman, Regency, we all have experience doing that, and we will always partner with the jurisdiction, so Falls Church's Economic Development Office, whatever other groups within the city regularly want to be doing things, that's the type of, those are the perfect people that we coordinate with, so this is not meant to replace, you know, what anybody else is doing, it's meant to just help it, but then we'll also coordinate with retailers on site for certain days, we'll, you know, ideally, what you'd have is, you know, one or two regularly planned events a week, bigger things once or twice a month, you know, whether it's the first Friday of every month, everybody knows to come for something. You want it to be a regular enough cadence that everybody comes back for these regular events, and they become part of what just the community thinks of as part of Falls Church, and so we would work with the city to come up with some really good ideas for what those might be.
Right. One of my dreams with the school of music is, and with the high school, is to have music on every corner.
Yeah, that's really cool.
You know, that would be just so awesome, the, for performances and everything. It just makes a very interesting...
Yeah, it really is true, and that, the high school plaza sets up really nicely for that. for that, you have the music school, the high school right there, you have the music venue on the main street, and so, you know, you could imagine partnering with the State Theater and doing a jazz festival in Falls Church where multiple venues throughout the city have different activities going on the same weekend, and so, people kind of come to see a certain genre of music. So, this could, it could get really fun and creative over time, and not just be about this project, it could be about the bigger city.
And we do have a blues festival.
There you go, exactly.
New place.
So, that, this is about materials as well, and so, it's important in these projects to kind of pick the spaces where you want to invest the most dollars on materials, so that they really shine, and you don't want to kind of, if you do it everywhere on the site, you end up typically with a lower level of quality everywhere, versus doing a high level of quality in the most important spaces, and then doing a really nice level in the other places, but nothing over the top. And Pike and Rose, I think, really exemplified that, most of the sidewalks of Pike and Rose are, you know, in nicely scored concrete, very pretty, a light gray and a beige, but then, when you get to the special spaces, you have beautiful pavers, you have really beautiful landscape, well, landscaping was beautiful throughout, water features, all the types of things that bring things, bring the space alive, and so, that's.
Let everybody about the trees and what you said on Sunday.
Yeah, so, street trees are really important, that was, and it came out of a question about Heat Island effect, and so, this whole plaza sits on grade, and so, we have the ability to have, you know, real full-growth trees there, ultimately, not to, you know, not little teeny spindly trees above parking. And so, it also allows us to think about larger caliber trees initially, so you can have trees that on day one feel, you know, bigger than those teeny little Christmas, I use the phrase, the Charlie Brown Christmas tree. And that's important, I mean, you want, you want, it's going to take a few years for the landscaping to come in and mature and feel great, but you do want as much as you can in that first year for it to feel intentional and large, go for it.
And, and the boulevard gives you the opportunity to do four, five, six, right, trees across versus just two sides of the street, and you can get different levels of canopy in different sections, so we're excited about that opportunity as well.
Well, that's key to keep people coming in the summer when it's so hot.
Exactly. Yeah, and also, you know, and then you have twinkle lights at Christmas time, and you have, you know, you do things that make the trees part of the feature of the project as well.
Nobody knows how hard it is for them to get twinkle lights.
Is it really hard to get twinkle lights on trees?
Oh, it took us a long while.
Okay.
And that looks really pretty down there.
It really does.
One hundred, two hundred block, but that took forever.
These lights are hard to maintain, music.
But even the act of putting them down there, it took forever.
Yeah, and so, here, the nice thing is, this would be maintained privately, the project itself would pay for the Christmas lights, they would be doing them, putting them up and taking them down, so that could help. But it really is, it's, and I'm Jewish, so Christmas isn't, you know, even though I'm Jewish, I love Christmas lights, so, that time of year, it's, you know, it's really special when you come to spaces that are lit up in the right way and have a certain decor that's really unique. And whether it's Rock Center or Pike and Rose, we have this beautiful star that we have above the main street, so.
Do a field trip.
And then, lastly, just thinking about how we can activate, you know, even little things, branding, naming, you know, everything from, you know, the covers, how pretty the sculptures are, to the street furniture, landscape furniture is really expensive, I mean, sorry, really important, and can be expensive, but it is, it is expensive, too, but it's really important. And so, the, you know, the right rocking chairs, the movable furniture, so people can own and personalize the space, is extremely important as well, when things are bolted down, they just don't feel like you have ownership over it. In this particular scene, which is from the wharf, there's firewood and there's a fire pit in the middle, and so, you know, you can sit around a fire pit, I think, do you guys hand out blankets there, is that right, or smores or something?
Oh, you can buy, I was.
You can buy smores. So, they're like little touches, Pinstripes is a really cool bowling place, I don't know if you've been there, but there's, they're in Georgetown and in Montgomery County, and they're started in Chicago where it's so cold, and they have these beautiful outdoor spaces, and they actually go around and hand out blankets, so people will sit outside and also cook smores and, you know, have a drink. So, being intentional and thinking about how each of these spaces could be used is, you know, part of what makes places special.
But those wooden containers are beautiful.
Yeah, it's really cool, isn't it?
They're great.
Yeah.
We do have someone who's tending the fire, we don't, it's not like adder-on wood.
You don't just go at two in the morning and set up a fire because you're cold. And that middle one on the, on the bottom is from Pike and Rose, that's, those are little, so just to give you a sense of placemaking and what we get into here, Montgomery County has a really big birding history, the Audubon Society was founded there, the Grosvenor family, which is the original Audubon Society family, has a mansion right near Pike and Rose, it's one of the biggest birding routes, I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff about birds, and so, we actually created these really cool little mini bird sculptures that spit water, they're fountains, and so, you know, an average person's going to walk through the site and have no idea that that has anything to do with the history of the county, but those are the types of surprises, we would work with the city to understand the city's full history, and then what are the pieces and spaces that make sense to kind of celebrate that to those who know the city best, and for it, for other people just to be a nice surprise. So, that's, anyway, that's the overview of the, of the project, and just, you know, we're obviously early on in this process, but we'd love any questions you might have.
All right, well, thank you very much, I'm definitely one of those people who have seen this many times, and was on the committee, to the selection committee, and it's really exciting to have you come before us and to show this presentation, and really to share, I know you've been out in the public constantly, but, but they showed to the planning commission so we can begin to have a dialogue about it. I think a lot of what you're saying now is, or almost all, everything you're saying now is consistent with what we heard during the selection committee, there's a lot of elements here that helped make my decision personally, and it is this sense of placemaking, it is confidence in your team, I think this is going to be a transformational space for the city. I like a lot of the other elements, just on the business side of it, I'm really pleased with how much office space has been included here. I have a really good understanding of what you've presented, so I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the committors, commissioners, to sort of ask their questions and see if they have something to.
I don't know if I have any questions, but just a couple of comments, it's certainly good to see the experience and the creativity that should be put into this, it's very evident. One aspect kind of reminds me a little bit of the city center in DC, where, you know, a lot of busy highway on the outside, so, you know, things are kind of focused on the inside as far as walkability and the restaurants and the other, it seems like you, you know, tried to do that here, because obviously Broad Street and ACOG are very busy streets, and it's hard to create a, you know, kind of a good, good sense of outdoor dining and that sort of thing, you know, there, so, kind of flag, kind of focused on the opportunity to emphasize the central part. The other thing is, I kind of like that you varied a lot the, the look of each of the buildings, so that it doesn't look like ten acres of all the same buildings, so you kind of, kind of buffered some of that artificiality by incorporating, you know, kind of unique, uniqueness in each of those building facades, so, it's very appealing.
Oh, so, what is your concept for the office space? Is, are these going to be rental buildings, condo buildings, are you looking for larger tenants, or?
Yeah, these are going to be rental office, kind of a, be a Class A office building, so, twenty thousand square foot per floor, we would be looking for, you know, major anchor tenants, smaller tenants, whoever's interested. And PN Hoffman had the most experience with this at the wharf, where they, you know, I think people, a lot of people thought you couldn't create an office market down there because it, you know, had been not that great a part of town for a long time, and not, and I don't mean that, I just mean from what it looked like, it was kind of, you know, along the water there. And so, they really created a market by creating such a wonderful place, and then that's the concept here, too.
Right.
We think we can compete for tenants with other markets in the area, with the right design.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I know people in, like in the Tysons area unhappy with how that's gone in terms of development, so there's a chance to pull people from there, but have you considered condos at all, office condos, I just say this, I'm a business owner and, and so, we've had, we own our, we own a business condo, and, and that's all we would look at because of the build-out for it, but.
So, it's interesting, so the cities, as part of their RFQ, they were really pushing for a ground lease, which is, would preclude condos, typically you'd have to rent, so the only buildings where we've been able to get the idea of fee simple is the residential condominium buildings, where there will be condos for sale. So, yeah, so I, I wouldn't imagine those going condo, I think they would be rental office.
Okay, it's just, it's a, it's a real gap we have in the city.
I mean, I think, one thing I think that I know is going to come up, and I'm sure the team's been looking at it, is the traffic engineering of the project, maybe adding a million square feet plus to an intersection that is already, you know, an F, level service F, and adding this kind of density here, I think it's, you know, I think it obviously needs to be addressed, I mean, I'm as excited as everyone else in the city, but I also drive through this intersection every day.
Right.
And so do, you know, hundreds of thousands of other folks, and so, the question becomes, right, you know, what has been proposed as far as, because right now, it already, you know, one of the key issues, I think, is the access into the Giant, you know, and how that, that and the pedestrian crossing with the crossing guards in the morning and afternoon, you know, it's close to the intersection, it backs up traffic, so adding all these additional trips, I mean, as, and I don't know if there's even been a planner to look at additional signals, it's not going to meet the VDOT spacing, so, I don't know, is there?
It has been looked at.
Yeah, so what is the team, I mean, so what's, I mean, what's the preliminary idea? I mean, we're trying to widen, right now, there's, you know, that, on HACO, you only have the one through lane and the two turns, I mean, what has been looked at as far as improved, you know, infrastructure improvements, because a lot of people are going to walk here, but a lot of people are also going to drive, I mean, for city residents, this is actually the farthest end of the city, there are a lot of county residents who are much closer, who will walk, and are probably, it'll be interesting to hear what the county folks have to say about it, but for city residents, I mean, I think, you know, a fair number of people should drive, and so, I think it's key in addition, you know, to, I guess the question, so what's, what's been looked at so far, I've heard a lot about that part of it, and I want to make sure that, you know, when the public, you know, comes in, I mean, you know, we all know that's going to be, you know, on people's minds as far as how that works, because it's already a difficult intersection today without this.
And has to coordinate with the grant we have as well.
Right.
Exactly.
That fifteen point seven billion grant.
Yep.
Right, so I haven't heard a lot about the specifics as far as what, you know, the team's been looking at, and I see that, and this, this, the drawings don't show that little detail, so, maybe we're not there yet, you know, but.
Yeah, so we, so what's been hap, what's happened so far is, Gorge Slade's been working with the city, kind of coordinating a traffic study for the whole area, including, I believe, the Virginia Tech and La Motta Parcels, too, and so, that there's kind of one traffic study that thinks about the whole area, and then, we've hired Gorge Slade as our traffic engineering consultant also, because they're the most familiar with the details of the numbers, and so, we'll be coordinating with the city, going to meet with VDOT, coordinating with the city, to meet with citizens about the traffic here, too, so we're just getting up to speed. What we do think is critical, you know, if, if the whole benefit, the only thing that's been proven to start solving traffic issues is to create as much grid of streets as you can, because it gives people as many ways to get around as possible, and one of the issues we have, I mean, I live in DC, in Adams Morgan, which is a very high, you know, urban area, and has a lot of grid of streets, so it's, it's rare that we ever think about traffic where I live, right, like, that's not a topic of conversation, because there's a million ways to go, and there's always a road to go, and, but as you get further in the suburbs, and, and the streets get more closed off, and cul-de-sacs, and it's not as easy to flow the traffic, you get into more and more traffic issues. So, part of what this project is about is kind of reintroducing the grid of streets to a neighborhood, and, and where that, what that does is, it means, when traffic is really bad, there are other ways to go throughout, so you can kind of get through the neighborhood that we've created here.
Right, but this, but this side, I think, is, again, it's really only accessed by those two arteries, I mean, you can't get here from anywhere else in the city without taking ACOG or something.
Agreed, but what happens is, if this is a bottleneck, for example, which it is, cars that are coming down here that are all waiting to make a turn here.
Oh, yeah.
Have the ability, sorry, right now, you're mixing all of your right turn and left turn cars are coming down here to sit at that traffic light, and by creating a grid of streets, a portion of those cars now have the ability to go this way and make a right, and a portion of those cars are still going to go this way to make a left, and you start separating out those cars, you literally double the capacity of that system.
Well, especially if you have ability to come out of the metro, like, in the future development.
That's going to be private.
Because right now, it's, it's pretty much.
It's private, but, I mean, the idea is that it'll feel like a public street with public access easements, and so, all of those, all of those streets, it's similar to here when traffic is terrible in seven and people drive on park to get around the neighborhood, and so, creating that secondary network of streets starts helping that issue, especially at that intersection.
Sure, absolutely, I mean, I think, I mean, the grid, the layout, from urban design perspective.
Yeah.
Without a doubt, I think that the grid is the way to go, but, again, I just think it, you know, as that gets fleshed out, maybe when Gorge Slade releases their study, you know, there'll be more detail on that, I just think that's going to be key to, you know, making the whole thing work.
Well, we, we're going to add a light, too, aren't we?
Yeah, there's a, there's a concept of, so right now, within that MBTA grant, there's a traffic light proposed on seven, and there's a, what's called a hawk signal proposed here, which we would actually like to be a traffic signal, so we would want a full traffic light here ideally.
I'd like to see a light on HACO, the real problem with that.
It doesn't need the spacing.
Yeah, but I think we need it out at the entrance, but the real problem with that traffic is it's mostly cut-through, they're cutting through from Great Falls down to 29.
Exactly, yeah.
And so, I think more lights would be better, because we want, we want to make it a less convenient cut-through.
Well, you also want to make it.
And the lights would only help me, who has to go there every day picking up and drop off my girl for sports after, I mean, I go there twice a day.
I think that's not a cut-through, HACO's a minor arterial, I mean, it's not, people aren't cutting through, I mean, HACO's a through road that connects to Shreve.
Well, I mean, they're, they're not stopping in the state, they're just driving through it.
That wasn't part of the city until recently, it's just that one block, but I, but I think that, I don't, it's not cut-through traffic, it's just, it's a very busy area, that's all I'm trying to get at.
Agreed.
And so, I think we need to.
It's a commuter route, how about that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's a through road, it's a major, you know, it's one of the ways to get.
We'll get some help, too, from the flyover that's going to go to West Falls Street, that'll relieve some of the traffic at that intersection.
One of the most dangerous places is making that left-hand turn into the school site. No, 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 off of HACO.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right, yeah.
Up, 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 up.
To the Virginia Tech.
Right there.
Yeah, well, because you, what happens is it backs up the people that need to cross over to Shreve, and so, you can't see that second right lane, and you have to guess sometimes and just go for it.
Right.
And that's why that needs a light, because right now, it, there's guessing going on all the time.
Right.
And then, if you're coming out of there, what you try to do is go around it and actually cut behind the Giant, so, I mean, it's, there's a whole mess going on there.
Yeah, and our preference is to have two lights, and, and so, for example.
Because that's so dangerous right there, particularly in the evenings for activities, because I go up to a lot of games and, scary as it gets.
We are cognizant that there's a real desire to protect Chestnut Street across, and so, I think that's, I think that's doable, there's a way to make sure that the traffic is not going through that neighborhood, and not to have that necessarily through, but then also to have a, but also to have a, a traffic light getting into the project, so you can get that traffic off of HACO. And then, the last thing I'd say also on traffic that's true, is right now, you've got a metro that's very auto-oriented, so everybody's driving to it, and you're not going to get everybody to start walking and biking to Metro, right, but you don't need to, if you were to get eight percent, ten percent of the users to start walking or biking or scootering or being, you know, instead of driving, you start really cutting into traffic flow, and so, part of that comes from creating a pretty walk, so today, for people that live here to walk to Metro is pretty unattractive, it's pretty inhospitable, and you're walking up against major roads, and you're, you know, the high school is somewhat of a barrier today.
Well, it's hard to cross, if you create.
Really hard to cross, exactly.
If you create a way to cross that Chestnut, that would help a lot, I mean, there's, there are people who live in Falls Hill, not everything else, but all of a sudden, they run across the street, which is pretty dangerous for folks to do it, because otherwise, they got to walk down to the signal.
Yep.
And, so if there's, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's a way to create a crossing there, yeah.
And then, not just the crossing, but imagine then walking on a really nice, attractive, retail-oriented street all the way back to the Metro, it's, this is only a half mile all the way to seven, so you do, you know, it's a fifteen-minute walk, ten minutes for some people, so it starts opening up the catchment area of the Metro, and that gets some people out of their cars, and we're not going to solve every issue, but I think there are ways to start solving some of the issues.
And Wyatt was saying yesterday about working it out with Fairfax County to try to get a better connection from the bike path back on up.
Exactly.
And then, we still, in the great glorious future, as I was talking with you about the, you know, getting a way to get up to the high school a lot better, and I, you know, should the Federal Realty ever get redeveloped, Paul told me that we could, we have access to the back of the Giant.
Yeah, cool.
Which would be absolutely perfect.
Good, just to go to the transit.
Just to go ahead. Glenn, you started talking about the transit. I mean, this is our only chance to do something really transit-oriented, given where it is. And, I mean, we talked a lot about traffic, we talked a lot about accommodate, and we know whenever he's not gonna drive, we're not gonna walk. But, what have you done, other than opening that up? What's different about this, from a, from a non-auto perspective? Given how unique this is, and how special it is by the subway station here?
Yep.
And there's a lot of big parking garage.
Right.
Which is, which I think is an anathema to a lot of the placemaking we're trying to achieve. Other than opening that up, how, how also, this is not gonna be just locally serving.
Right.
You, you, you're designing, you're trying to bring the folks all throughout the region.
Yeah, so there's, so I'd say there's different audiences for different parts of the project. So, for the retail component of the project, we have to have parking for the retail to survive. There needs to be people that can get to the site easily, obviously, especially for restaurants and grocery. So there is parking for the retail, certainly. Um, our parking counts for residential, we're at point eight per unit for the apartments, which is not a huge amount for an apartment building, um, in a suburban area. And that kind of encourages people not to have cars to the extent they can.
Is that less than our code? Or is that, they're gonna see reduction for parking, parking reductions?
We're at point eight per unit.
I think it is, because we had point nine at, uh, what's the one we just approved?
Yes, that would be.
Founders Row, and they applied for a.
Ranges from one to two per unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Depending on the bed configuration.
And so, part of that is having less parking, um, providing car share options. Um, so people can be encouraged not to have a car, and when they need to go grocery shopping, they can, you know, use a car, car share space. We would also then, um, we would measure that, so to the extent that we're effective in getting people out of their cars, we have the ability in future phases to do less parking. Um, and so you kind of create a, a system where people are encouraged not to use parking, you charge for it, which also encourages them not to, not to have a car. For the office space as well, the phase one office building is assumed to have a good amount of parking, because it's, we're creating the district. Whereas the phase two building, we think will have much less parking. So we're kind of setting it up for this future where it becomes much more pedestrian-oriented. Especially with car share too, because that gives people more, and Uber and things like that, it gives people the opportunity to really not own a car. We've been talking, I've been doing some research on this idea of, you know, could you market this building as a low-car-oriented building, where between car share and Uber and bikes and all the other things that we can provide with bike lanes and this great pedestrian environment, could you attract people who specifically want to live here, because they don't want to have a car, but they work in Tysons or something, or, you know, they can get to metro, work by metro or, um, by bus? So there's, there's ideas we're actually studying and doing research on around that. I'd love to be able to do something to that extent, if we think it could work.
Shared curb space, things like this.
Yeah, and, and then the design of it, um, you know, having retail-oriented, I mean, it goes back to like the best planning principles of Jane Jacobs, right? Like, having retail-oriented streets, um, with light coming out of the retail that makes people feel safe when they come back from metro at night, is one of the best ways to encourage people to get out of their cars and actually take metro. Um, and so, you know, Metro, Womata recognizes this as a great opportunity for them, because they want to increase ridership here. And so, if that grid of streets really works and that pedestrian boulevard feels great, you really will get people out of their cars. Providing the bike lanes, which we incorporated into the project, helps as well, bike share. So it's a, it's gonna be a mix of ten or fifteen strategies, um, that will ultimately help, uh, ensure that at least the new people living here won't use cars as often as the current people living in the neighborhoods.
And, and I think that's, that's key as well, it's the, the new people. So just the fact of adding this density in proximity to metro is, is, you know, principle one, really, about the, of the transit orientation.
And then on the above-grade structure deck, so we, we've originally had a plan with more below-grade parking. The city was trying to come up with ways to increase land value, and so part of the reason we have that above-grade parking deck is because it's a creative way to increase land value for the city, because it's less expensive for supply parking. But it also creates an opportunity for the city, so we have no idea where car ownership is going. And we could find ourselves in ten, fifteen years where like my kids will never own a car. And we all know millennials are opting not to own cars as often. So, to the extent auto driverless cars and car share become the future, you know, you won't need an eight-hundred-space structured parking deck, in which case that can be torn down and be a development site. So it, and you know, if that were below grade, as it is in Columbia Heights at the Target, that's a waste of space that will never, ever be captured again for anything other than mothball parking, that never gets used. There's hundreds of spaces down there that no one uses, whereas this gives at least an opportunity for flexibility in the future.
I'd encourage you to talk of those.
Okay, got it.
Now, I don't think I can explain it correctly, but there's a situation with the parking garage that they're, uh, having to deal with Fairfax County to have that used by the s- school and have that on the school property and everything like that. So they're still waiting for cooperation from Fairfax County with it. And it's just one of those things that was, that was a percentage of use of land up there. On your main streets and everything, I can understand where you've got parking to have curbs, but are there gonna be any curbs on the middle section, on the?
Uh, I'm sorry, where are you, where are you thinking about?
Well, just, there's, I know you've got parking and street parking, so there's probably curbs.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes.
But are you going to have, we have one development with the festival, uh, street, where there's no curbs in front of.
Where it's curbless, uh-huh.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you're gonna include that.
Yeah, do you want to talk about that from the retail section? There's an idea for some. That retail plan? There we go.
So if we see it on the, the bottom plan, so you can see the parked cars on the retail side, so you've got some of that teaser parking. It also buffers the pedestrians, um, from, from the moving vehicles. And then, on the, the, the boulevard sign toward, side towards the green in the middle, that likely would be curbless, or at least curbless in portions of it.
Right, right.
And this gets to the, the ease of crossing, but also some of the emergency access, can the fire truck get out there, or the guys be able to.
And it also, yeah, also helps if you shut the whole street gap.
Right.
Right.
To have more of a flow. It's really worked in a very small area here. Uh, out of curiosity, have you done any of this, uh, deep soil tests up at that site?
You don't have to ask for that?
December twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay.
And twenty-eighth.
Right, we couldn't.
The only way, only reason is that the, the school site is all infill. It was a mess.
Yeah, so we got the original soils reports, um, around the school, and we're doing additional borings, and we're doing them, uh, between Christmas and New Year's while school's out.
But I think you'll probably find more of the farmland up above, because that was all silt running down into the, uh, into that streamway down there.
Yeah, it appears that, on the backside of the high school, between, uh, where the high school is and the intermediate school is, is where the largest amounts of fill are.
Yeah, that all came from Seven Quarters Shopping Center, eighteen feet of it. But, uh, the, uh, but, you know, when we redid the, uh, stadium field, we had a, it was about a half million extra, because they had to take it, it was all landfill.
Oh, really?
And so, they had to take that a lot. Now, you know what my question is?
Yes, I'm ready for it.
I'm ready for the answers. Um, I keep asking, and I will continue to do so, uh, is the parking garage gonna be built strong enough to be able to put anything on top of it?
So this is the third time I've been asked this question, this is the first time I have a partial answer.
You'll hear it.
Okay, so the above-grade garage that's designed here is a pre-cast, there's two different types of above-grade parking. You have poured-in-place concrete, where you pour slabs, and you have pre-casts where you bring in pieces, which is less expensive. So the garage is designed as pre-cast today. If it were to be poured-in-place, it would be eight to ten million dollars more expensive, so, and poured-in-place gives you more structure and ability to build above. Which my guess is probably not worth it to the city, it would reduce land value pretty dramatically. We're looking at whether you could do something above a pre-cast garage, and what that would entail, um, and what that might cost. So I'll have that answer for you, it'll take a little bit of time. The only thing we'd have to be aware of is to the extent there's a desire to do something above pre-cast in the future, you kind of need to know upfront what you want to do.
Right.
Because the structure needs to be created in a way that it supports it. And so, for example, at Pike and Rose, we have solar carports on the entire level, excuse me, of that, uh, pre-cast garage, but we knew that in advance, so we dealt with all the pre-wiring for it, and we, uh, made sure that the structure could handle the weight, especially the weight of the snow on top of the solar, um, carports. So you, there needs to be some pre-work involved in that. And so, the, then the question becomes, we will find out what that cost might be, to the extent, right now, the city gets roughly five million dollars more for us doing pre-cast parking above grade, to the extent that amenity costs, or that extra structure costs three, four million dollars, then that's less money the city would get, so I think there would just be, have to be a conversation about trade-offs on that.
You'd take it down anyway at some point, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And it might, that's what somebody, one of our guys we talked to had said, it might just be cheaper at that point.
To take it down.
To take it down and just, you know, build an amenity on the first floor and build what you need.
And for everything, you're working very closely with people building the high school too.
Yeah, yeah, we have regular meetings, um, we have a monthly meeting, and then we, about every other week, we have a meeting with them as well. Any other questions?
Including, yeah, so we'll be meeting them tomorrow.
Yeah, I guess one question, just, and I don't think you covered it, at least I didn't hear it. So what's your conception in terms of, like, the environmental side of this project? And LEED and all those different certifications, I mean, what are you guys gonna, what's your overall goal gonna be there?
Yeah, so our agreement, it has LEED gold for all the buildings, with the exception of the hotel, which is LEED silver. The LEED ND gold as well, neighborhood development. And the, I think what will be really high, I mean, and you can talk to us too, I should actually, I'll, we'll go back and forth, because Murphy has more experience on this than I do. But, um, really high level of storm, a stormwater management perspective. We're looking into, from a heat island perspective, what we'll be doing with lighter color materials, with green roofs, with large street trees. So, you know, I have experience with solar, Pian Hoffman has experience with solar as well. Um, in our case, the solar was able to let, let light the entire garage at Pike and Rose, as well as part of the hotel. So, um, so we're looking into that, we're meeting with, uh, Council Commissioner Stevens, also about the, um.
Property says clean energy.
Thank you, far from excess clean energy. And so, we know the city might be interested in doing something to that extent, so we're gonna learn as much of it as we can about it. Um, and so, our goal is to be, our goal is to think about this project, I mean, it will be a high level of sustainability, and then the question is whether we're gonna be marketing it also as a high level of sustainability.
Right.
And in some communities, that's extremely important to people, in some communities, it's less so, um, it's almost expected at this point.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I mean, if you were gonna market it that way, you really should be going for platinum.
Yeah.
Because, because anything I see marketed as environmentally, you know, for, or energy-free, it's all, you know, it's usually platinum.
Yeah, so I, I'd say this, I mean, we're, we're less, so as a company, EYA is less focused on USGBC and what their different requirements are for different buildings, because there's a million ways to be really sustainable that may not meet the way they're thinking about it. Um, and so, so we have our own thoughts on HVAC and how to be really sustainable from an HVAC perspective that might not a hundred percent marry up to them. So platinum is, is a great goal for some places. For this site, that might not be the best goal, so we gotta figure out what's the right thing for this site. Um, and a lot of it, we think in this case, is about stormwater management, and it's about, um, it's about heat island, it's about creating the right place with the right landscaping, that's gonna be, you know, um, attractive as well. But we'll, we'll be working with all of you on that over the next, you know, few months.
That was a big question yesterday with a lot of discussion.
It's way too far in advance, but kind of just touching, uh, on that a little bit. Do you have E, EUI targets or any u- energy use intensity targets for the buildings themselves?
Uh, we haven't yet, we haven't gotten that far along, but we, we will.
Later.
Well, and then, you know, it was interesting, we had a presentation, when was that, kind of like a few weeks ago, about the fact that in the long term, it, it, it's the material cost, the, it's what the material does environmentally that's more important, so have you guys, I mean, you're looking at that side of it as well?
Yeah, using sustainable materials, yeah.
Right, because it's, if they said as time goes on, that's really the bigger piece of the pie, is what was done, how it was constructed, and the materials used.
Right.
That was the Chris Pike, um, presentation from November fifth.
Oh, good call, recall. I just knew it was a while ago.
It's the kinds of materials, but it's also, I think you pointed this out, how they come together. So a tight building envelope, so that reduces energy usage and leakage, and, and even upfront costs of systems is a big, big part of it. I think the really exciting part of the sustainability strategy is it's both. It's both, uh, a neighborhood development lead strategy, so looking at it from the community standpoint, and then a collection of lots of different buildings, lots of different kinds of buildings, that, that have their own lead component as well. So it's inside the building, it's outside the building for, for the neighborhood, and I think energy is gonna be the, the key piece to focus on, on the individual buildings.
The hardest part is gonna be, um, it's always, there's always a balance in everything, right? So we're building wood-framed buildings here, which by the nature of them are harder to achieve certain USGBC goals from a lead perspective. They do have their own elements that are very sustainable, but for example, building envelope in a wood-framed building is harder to achieve than concrete, because the building shifts more, it's harder to have, you know, on the top of a wood-framed building, uh, a more efficient HVAC system versus what you see typically in wood-framed buildings, which are split systems. So there's, you know, the, if, if in order to achieve sustainability goals, the building needs to go to concrete, then that means the building's more expensive to build, which means the land value's less. So, we're trying to balance that, which is why we came up with this proposal of wood frame, less expensive, we can pay more for land. So that's, that's where we're at, but I, I, you know, we're, these buildings will be sustainable, and we'll, you guys will be proud of it ultimately when it's done. You're gonna do, uh, stick-built even on some of the higher-density buildings? Just the, right now, just the multifamily apartment building is stick-built, and then potentially, one of the, one or two of the condo buildings might be. But the others are gonna be concrete, yeah. All right.
Um, I have a few questions, some are probably obvious, and that other people know, because they've been to all the meetings, I haven't been to any. Um, the phasing, what, what's the main reason not to do it all at once, just?
Yeah, just absorption, so, just the ability, the office market's, so in this case, condos and office are two things you don't want to come out with too many at once.
Okay.
Because condos, you know, you're, even in a great market, you're only gonna sell a few a month. So you could build that whole building and sit for five, five years before it sells out, so you want to phase that in little chunks. And your lenders are gonna kind of force you to phase it.
And so, I guess that sort of probably leads it to my next question, which is, the timing of phase two would sort of depend on how quickly the other stuff is taken up.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So if it's going fast, you'd bill it sooner, if it's slower. And then the office flex, what is the flex possibilities?
Oh, so that's, that's from, this is from our original submission a while ago. And at the time, that was office flex, meaning it could be residential or office. In our new plan, what we've done is broken that up into two parcels, so there's now an office and a residential parcel.
Okay.
For the second phase.
Okay, so that's probably what it'll end up being.
Yeah.
And for the office that's gonna go to phase one, what's the height on that, and is that flexible? Like, if you're sensing a lot of demand when you're working on it, you can build it higher?
Yeah, this project here, so this building is roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, and it's twenty thousand per floor, so it's six to seven stories above the retail, so it'll feel like an eight, eight to ten-story building. And we could go taller than that, um, that will depend on pre-leasing, so when we come before you for the SEE, we'll get kind of a range of square footage approved of that building, and then to the extent we get some, you know, really big.
Corporate, each Q says, hey, I'll take the whole building.
Certainly love to do bigger, obviously.
All right. And then, um, you probably don't have any idea about this, but the timing of either the Virginia Tech or the Womata stuff, I mean, is that on the same time scale of, of, of this project, or is that sort of like?
It's, it's not as quick as this project, I mean, this project, we're hoping to break ground, you know, within two, little over two years.
Right.
Um, so I don't think they're quite there. They've been coordinating really closely though with the city, um, from a planning perspective, so I think there's a lot of conversations about timing back and forth between them. Virginia Tech, yeah, what I'd say about Virginia Tech is we know that we're one of the two teams they've kind of, are starting to negotiate with. Uh, we don't know what their timing is as far as making a selection, our hope is it sometime in the next six months or so.
Yeah, also hoping their Amazon plans don't.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, and then Womata, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what Womata's plans are, but I know they're focused on it. They're, they.
Because, because I mean, the, the, the street and the, the storyteller's really cool, getting up to metro, but doesn't, isn't as cool if, if you get to a fence right there.
Yeah, no, I mean, Womata's been, Womata's been at the table, talking to the city, very focused. They understand the benefit of having a street grid that works there. They submitted a comprehensive plan amendment to Fairfax County along with, so they know, they are focused on this. My sense is they'll come out with an RFP or something.
That takes a long time, Fairfax.
And, um, and then, the parking deck, you mentioned eight hundred spaces, like, first of all, if you had your druthers, you would want it, you wouldn't want it.
I would want it, yeah.
Because I know the schools are kind of trying to decide.
Mm-hmm.
It's, how much of it would be for the commercial side versus the school side?
So there'd be roughly a hundred and eighty-seven spaces for the school, um, on the first floor. And then they would have, the idea is that on overflow days, where you guys have, you know, a really big school event, some of the flex parking in there, the office parking, which is generally not gonna be the same hours, can be used for overflow from the school.
Okay.
Um, that same parking would be used for overflow from the restaurants and the music venue as well, so that's one of the nice things about the offices and.
So it's mostly to serve the office, which obviously.
It's office and retail largely, yeah.
Has limited use in the evening and stuff like that. And then, um, my favorite topic, which is, especially until you have that connectivity to metro, you should look into the autonomous minibuses, they can essentially make that a virtual connection, so it would run up and down your.
Ollie.
Or Ollie, or.
Just get him one.
May Mobility up in Michigan, they, they're already actually doing it in places.
What's the name, May?
May Mobility, um, just because.
How much they cost?
I actually do, it's less than you'd think, but, um.
Well, how much is it?
They told me you can get a fleet of like six of them for less than a, less than a, like, seven hundred grand a year, which seems like a lot, but, for a magic bus system, and, and that was for when I was talking about like, serving the whole city, for something like this, could be a lot less. But, but I'm just thinking that, until that connectivity's there, if you just had a little bus that literally every five minutes zips you over to the metro and back, it could be both cool and an effective way to make that connection. But overall, I think it's great, and, um, hopefully, everything is smooth sailing from here on out. I'm sure it will be.
Let me just play off of that, um, what do you see as some of the risks here going forward? Mm-hmm, I mean, the, the, that's a good question. The biggest risk is, um, I would say because we have so many different uses in our first phase, you know, one of the risks would be the market for X, you know, goes away, or the economy crashes. I'd say the economy crashing is probably the biggest risk, for all of us in this region. And we're not, you know, the nice thing here is typically metro-oriented sites have been more protected during crashes than other places, because people still are craving urban walkable neighborhoods near metro, so that demand has been relatively high. But a crash of the market would be a, a risk. You know, even in these product types, even though it's a mix of uses, I don't know that there's, um, I don't know that one is necessarily more risky than the others. Condos and office tend to be more risky than multifamily apartments, which, if you build it and the market's not there, eventually, the market will come back. Condos, you gotta build them and sell them once, so that's a, a pretty big risk there.
Can I fill up that just real quick? So, the, we've had trouble attracting a hotel property here, why would the site be different for?
I, so, it's a good question, we've talked to a few hoteliers already, um, that are interested, and part of it is the sponsors. So, you know, Pian Hoffman has unbelievable experience and track record, people love the Wharf, their hotels, hotels have been extremely successful there. At Pike and Rose, which we built, um, when I was at Federal Realty, the Canopy Hotel's been, is wonderful, it's really cool, right in the middle of the project. So there are hotel companies that understand the benefits of creating an urban, walkable, transit-oriented space, and that that is a different, it is different economics than other hotels that might have been in the city before. So I think that's why there's more interest. It doesn't guarantee that, you know, we think that hotel deal's gonna work really well, but that's still a risk too, you're right, hotels risky in general.
Just have one thought, you got, uh, I'm, but who, uh, out of, I guess, to you, who is, uh, responsible for the architecture?
Well, it's a team.
Okay, a team, but I, yeah, but it's, so it's gonna be cooperative or different architects working on different parts?
This is a good question, so, so we are, I'm the developer, or one of the developers, Pian Hoffman, um, EYA and Regency. Tordi Gauss is our consultant, um, working for us on the architecture and planning side. um, EYA and Regency. Tordi Gaus is our consultant, um, working for us on the architecture and planning side. So they are gonna be doing the overall planning. There'll be architects for a good portion of these buildings. There may be a different architect here and there for a building or two.
Okay.
Um, and then to the extent there, you know, on the multiple buildings they're on, we'll make sure that the architecture feels and looks different. Um, so it doesn't feel like you're, you know, Disneyland.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Although I do love, thank you. I love Disneyland. One of my favorite places. I agree.
I'd just like to hear you talk in general about what drew you to this site and to the city in general.
Uh-huh. Uh, so I've been thinking about this site for five years. When I was at, uh, Federal Realty, which owns the shopping center next door, we had always kind of thought about what, you know, or followed what was going on and thought about potentially something going on here. And I participated in a ULI TAP that the city performed. So I was one of the kind of business, um, people. It was kind of funny. There was only like three of us at a table off by ourselves. And if you remember, the room was really long and skinny. We were the last table in the other room, so we, we couldn't even see the presentation. Um, but, but anyway, but, you know, the building blocks were there. Um, and projects that I personally like to work on and that EYA likes to work on are things where we can create a neighborhood and create a place. And here, you have enough land area. Um, you have these hidden assets like the Metro, um, where you can, you can really create something different here that would transform the space. And so people thinking of it initially, um, may never assume that you could create something like this here, but those of us who have done it before know that it's possible. Um, there aren't a lot of, you know, big pieces of land near Metro, um, left that are in really great neighborhoods and a great city where you have a dedicated population and people that are really engaged and really good schools and, um, you know, good job market, and you're close to other good job markets. So it has all of these great characteristics to it. Um, and the opportunity, quite frankly, to have it be three big parcels collectively working jointly makes it even that much more exciting. Um, so, I mean, that, that's why we were originally excited. And I would say since working, engaging with the city, what's been very clear is how excited and interested and engaged the people are in the process and how good it's been to work with the city to date. So a lot of entitlements in this region will be, um, somewhat difficult or, you know, you're kind of battling it out with the jurisdiction. Um, and what's great is you guys have done all the pre-work you needed to do over the last four or five years to set this up in the right way so that it can be successful and that we can have a process working with the community where this will be something that the community's excited about. Um, and that doesn't mean that everybody's gonna be excited. I'm sure there'll be some that won't. But I think, um, oftentimes that lift is all on the developer. Where you're trying to kind of convince everybody to do something and the city's not even sure they really want it. And it's, it's been a really nice partnership to date, working with everybody.
Terrific.
I think it's, I, I think it's ironic that the city, when the Metro came in, went out of their way to have the Metro stations located outside the city. And so we are finally building around one of them.
Uh, you know, it's somewhat of a case study. I mean, when this goes through and ultimately gets built, I think jurisdictions that have the foresight you guys have had, and obviously you were in a situation where you kind of needed to do it because you had to build a school. So there was something that forced this to happen. But even if that weren't there, as you think about future parts of the city, like when a jurisdiction does the pre-work in advance to set something up to be successful, it makes a huge difference because you're, you're allowing the developer to come in and work with the city collectively and not have it be, um, controversial and confrontational, which is what often happens. And when it's confrontational, it means there's more risk. It means you don't know if you're gonna get approvals. It means you don't know if you're gonna be able to get through the process and get permits. Um, when, you know, your city manager can assemble thirty, forty city employees to discuss a project in one big meeting, that's, you never get that in any jurisdiction. So it's really a very cool process.
Don't get too comfortable. We'll get through this, but there will be some public meetings that could last till midnight or longer.
That's fine. I'm used to that.
We get a lot of comments sometimes.
Cause they're neighbors to the side.
Yeah.
But you know, there really weren't that many comments yesterday. It was amazing.
Well.
And there's certain questions, but all of a sudden, all of a sudden Wyatt's saying, doesn't anybody have anything to say?
I think, I think a lot of people who go to those public meetings are just, they're, they're interested in the project and they're positive. Usually it's when we're actually going to vote.
Says they've never heard of this before.
That's when the people show up. So I'm just saying, don't get too comfortable, but it'll be fun. We've gotten through it multiple times.
Karen's, Karen's been through some of those.
Yeah, she knows.
Uh, well, I appreciate what you're saying. Uh, as someone who has been on really virtually every committee associated with this, um, over the last couple of years, I know there's a real commitment from the city to make this work. We do have some, some impetus for needing to have this happen. But, um, even outside of that, there, there's just been real cooperation from, uh, certainly I can speak for the Planning Commission, but also from the School Board and, and from the City Council and, and all the surrounding members. I, I do, I do think it's, uh, fair to say that we are excited as a, a group. There's details to work out. Um, I do have lots and lots of questions, but I, I do know that they've already been raised in these other forums, and I, I don't think it's worth, you know, going through all the question marks about the garage and, and how things are gonna flow with the high school and all those sort of considerations. Uh, those will be answered in due time and, uh, but I will say, uh, again, as part of those committees, I do think the proposal you put together here and it continues to adjust, um, has been really thoughtful. And, uh, it was, uh, just a, sort of a, a breath of fresh air as we received it, or as, again, let me just speak for myself, to, to think that you incorporated, uh, many of the elements we were looking for, um, were really responsive to, to the RFP. Uh, thought, uh, I thought really critically and importantly about how it works with the school, which was really important. Um, uh, I was also really drawn to the, the large phase one component of this. I think that, um, that, I know you understand that that's important, but, um, I think, uh, it's a fact that many in the city don't appreciate what, what kind of investment this requires from a developer to, to, to do, you know, three hundred and some odd million dollars of investment right up front, um, on a market that's partially unproven in that area and, 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 you know, you're putting in some Class A office space that, uh, I think our city, uh, demands, but, uh, but also desperately needs. So to, to, to put, um, you know, your money where your mouth is and do that huge phase one was a real big appeal to me in addition to your experience in the placemaking. So, um, uh, it's exciting now to, that this is, again, out in the open and we can now talk about it and, and it's not all, you know, bottled up in notebooks and under confidentiality and things like that. So, uh, I'm really excited about it. I've been on record as saying that many times. Uh, so, uh, welcome to the city and, and, and I look forward to working with you and the Planning Commission to, uh, make this, you know, as best a project as we possibly can.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Thank you.
Kevin, are there any people back there that didn't get one of these?
Sure.
Before, I believe Sharon got one either. From the high school.
I'm sorry, high school.
So where are you tomorrow night? I mean, I assume it's one, it's a school board.
Back here.
And then, and then Wednesday, I mean, it's, it's every night.
Wednesday night we have off.
You have off?
I'm gonna see my wife and kids Wednesday.
I got an invite, uh, yesterday at like eleven o'clock to come to the Sunday Town Hall. Uh, and I was like, Rush, you should really show up at this. I'm like, I, I think I'm gonna hear it on, on, on Monday night. It's, I've already heard it and these other committees.
It's been really nice. I mean, it's, and it's a lot of the same faces over there, so many people just walk in.
Yeah.
After the fifth time, I'll be able to give it.
Right, exactly.
We're getting pretty good at it.
Okay, well, thank you all. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, it's actually on the hard drive here. It's on this. I have no way to connect, uh, because we're on the school system here versus the city system. Okay, you want me to, you need me to?
Carly has it too.
Oh, does she?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just get it. Thank you. Uh, I don't know how to. I don't know how to use a mark. Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you. Uh, alright, um, let's go back to, uh, action item number six, which was now seven, uh, on the, uh, two thousand nineteen meeting dates. Which I'm not sure there's much to talk about. Are you want to just, uh, make sure that we looked at them? I guess the January one's the big change.
Yes. Uh, so this is, uh, thank you. So, uh, before you tonight, uh, is your tentative, uh, meeting, uh, schedule for calendar year twenty nineteen. Uh, as usual, the calendar is based on the idea of meeting on the first and third Mondays of the month, except when there's a holiday and then that meeting date shifts to a Tuesday. Uh, certainly in twenty eighteen, this was the intent, and there were a couple of meetings that got canceled due to, uh, summer travel and, and awkward start dates with the start of school. And so there's always flexibility in this. The one place where this varies from that first and third style, uh, is in January. So the first January, I'm sorry, the first Monday in January is January seventh. Uh, and with that, uh, premise of getting package materials to you all a week in advance, that January seventh day becomes a real problem. Uh, and, and even getting them a week in advance on January fourteenth will be a stretch. But the idea is if we move that mainly organizational meeting back to the fourteenth, that would give the commission a little more time to see materials. Uh, also if, um, uh, commissioners wanna, uh, make changes, uh, uh, and weigh in on the rules of procedure, the annual report to council, it gives a little bit more time for the commissioners also to provide comment. The, uh, intent would then be to do back-to-back meetings on the fourteenth and the twenty-second. Uh, so, uh, it would be the Monday and then the Tuesday following. I think there's a holiday in there. Uh, the twenty-second would be designed as a business meeting, uh, and so the package would come out probably shortly after the fourteenth. But there'd be little interaction between those two sets of materials.
I guess the question is, um, the question is, is there any way to combine those meetings? I mean, how much reorganization do we need? Do we need a whole meeting for organization? And do we have enough business? Can we combine those into one meeting?
The, uh, there's a, there are potential applications that are coming in and we're working with the applicants to try and get their materials. And it's always a little difficult over the holiday break. And so I wanna hold that January twenty-second date in case there are applicants, uh, who are on a time crunch to get their materials through. I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
But isn't the reorganization just like we vote the chairman and the vice chairman and? What else do we need? Do we need all meeting for that?
We can have other stuff on there.
Yeah, I think this year I wanna, um, I hope that we, uh, spend a little bit more time on it. I mean, by and large, we have some appointments we gotta make and some chair and vice chair meetings. But, uh, it was in this packet and, and there was a lot of comments as we went through the rules and procedures that I think require some discussion.
That's fine.
But, uh, you know, whoever is the, the chairperson, they can cancel the twenty-second if, uh, they don't think it's necessary if these applications don't come in.
Well, that's the other thing. If there are no applications, then, then the twenty-second would really be designed as a, uh, as needed.
Okay.
Uh, and I think this year we have already talked about, um, trying to streamline the CIP process by saying these are the people we want to talk to. But I, I would note that normally, while it's not on here, we usually have a, there's, there's a period where it goes, three meetings in a row are two scheduled, and then like another CIP work session in that February, March timeframe, usually February. So, uh, that's not an official meeting, but I, that time of year. So, so it is tight up front where it's gonna go, you know, the fourteenth, the twenty-second, and then the fourth, and then I suspect the, probably the following week after that, just because that seems to be the way this works. But maybe we can cut that out if we can give more guidance to Cindy on the CIP.
On the, just for information, on the back of the hard copy of the agenda that was at the GAS tonight, you can see a tentative agenda for that January fourteen meeting. As you said, it's, it's election of chair and vice chair. Uh, also looking at those survey results in terms of how does the Planning Commission want to run the meetings? What do you all need in terms of support from staff? Looking at the rules of procedure, the annual report, which could, uh, and probably should identify a list of priorities or goals for the commission to address or request to council. Uh, and then the CIP, uh, priority questions. I think the idea here is to try and streamline the CIP process, um, uh, with as much business as is, uh, gonna be scheduled for the Planning Commission. Instead of sticking with the standard of multiple presentations on multiple topics across multiple nights, if the Planning Comi, if the temperature of the Planning Commission is that in general the CIP is good, uh, understanding there were updates from last year to this year, uh, but there are a handful of items that the commission wants to explore in general, that could be a way to both streamline commission's agendas as well as staff preparation.
Um, and, uh, it is again, something that maybe as we talk about on January, not, uh, this evening, but, uh, we typically have had our retreat, or what we've recently been calling our advance, in, uh, in March. The, the date that looks like it falls in that range is the eight, the eighteenth would be a good date. I would say however, that we're, according to this presentation that we just heard, there is gonna be a request for a recommendation on April first. So, um, if we don't really, I don't know what that means in terms of holding work sessions. It can always be pushed later into the year, uh, but typically we're trying to do it up front and do this dance between the CIP and, uh, and fitting this in, in the, in the early part of the year. So just something to think about. Uh, maybe we can, uh, have a official designation of a date in January when we meet, just so we can give guidance to applicants that says we are not taking, uh, things on the adjet, like give them heads up if you wanna get in and, and have us review something, it needs to not be for the, you know, don't plan on the eighteenth. Something like that. I'd like to be able to give the, the community or the development community some guidance on that as soon as we can. So just to think about all this stuff that's happening in the beginning of the year.
For what it's worth, April fifteenth is spring break, so some of us may not be here that day. If you're scheduling correctly.
Good, good point. Um, alright, uh, otherwise, anybody have any que, does anybody have a real issue with the fourteenth? I think it's almost a necessity based on our new policy of trying to get these package out, um, uh, at least a week in advance. Great. Uh, alright, let's move on to the Fellow's Property Acquisition.
We need a motion to adopt that? No, we don't need to adopt the schedule?
I think, uh, it would be nice just to have an action to go with it.
Okay.
So it's listed as an action item?
It is listed as an action item. You are correct, Mr. Krasner. Thank you.
I move that we approve the proposed schedule.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Do you think we need a roll call vote on this, or you think? Alright.
Voice vote. And then if there's dissension, then we'll call for a roll call.
Okay, fair enough. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any dissension? No. Alright, it's been approved. Thank you for correcting me. Um, the, alright, are we?
Well, I, I think we're, we're, I think our rules of procedure say we have to adopt a schedule or something.
Yeah, I do.
Um, alright, uh, item six B, or seven B now, uh, the Fellow's Property Acquisition.
Uh, before you Planning Commissioners tonight, uh, is, uh, an action item. This is, uh, an approval of a proposed action by council to acquire, uh, what was formerly known as the Fellow's Property. Uh, and you can see the lengthy legal description there in the title. It's the Oak Park subdivision, uh, section three, lots one through seven. Uh, it's located, the property is located at, uh, six oh four South Oak Street, or was formerly located in six oh four South Oak Street. It's across from the TJ Elementary School, uh, fronting on the Oak Street as well as, uh, Parker and Fellow's Court. I wanna walk through a couple of the procedural items. I know this was a late addition to the agenda. Uh, the, as I said, the request is for a, uh, an approval from the Planning Commission. Staff recommends, uh, that Planning Commission do approve the acquisition, uh, based on the guidance that it's consistent with the city's future land use map, uh, and that the, uh, city and the property owner have come to agreeable terms for, uh, sale, purchase of the land. Uh, for, uh, background, uh, the size of the area, the size of lands, uh, just under two acres at approximately one point nine five acres of land. Uh, in twenty sixteen, the city did amend its future land use map to show, uh, that, uh, property would be best used for the community as, as either parks, open space, or schools. Uh, and as required, that did include a recommendation from the Planning Commission, which was positive. Uh, in twenty eighteen, um, the city had filed, uh, I'm sorry, uh, shortly after a subdivision, uh, that was approved by the Planning Commission to convert it from one lot to seven, the city entered into a combination suit, uh, to acquire the property, uh, through a court process. Uh, however, there was now a, uh, an agreeable set of terms identified. The Planning Commission by charter on any property acquisition has to weigh in and, uh, provide, uh, approval of the acquisition. Uh, failing approval from the Planning Commission, uh, property can only be acquired by a super majority of council, uh, super majority vote of council. Uh, the, uh, the charter text that goes along with that is copied in lines fifty-six through sixty-five of the staff report. The staff report goes on to describe, uh, uh, description of the property as well as adjacent uses and what's shown on the future land use map and the zoning map. Uh, as I said, uh, staff, uh, planning staff recommends, uh, positive approval of the acquisition. Uh, along with the positive approval, there's one other clause, uh, in the proposed motion, uh, and that is that as the property is developed for public purposes, uh, that, uh, serious consideration be given to the, the sidewalk, crosswalk, uh, network that was developed, uh, as part of the subdivision process. Uh, that sidewalk network was motivated by. That sidewalk network was motivated by not only the city's sidewalk policies and the subdivision ordinance, but also by the city's adopted ZPRAS to school plan, which identifies Parker as part of the TJ trail. And so getting more crosswalks, more sidewalks, as well as better curb geometry, including curb extensions, was seen as a positive step for the community.
Thank you not only for the staff report, but for putting it together so quickly. I hope everybody has had a chance to review it. I know this one was on a non-traditional timeline for us. So I appreciate everybody agreeing in part to reviewing this on short notice. Before I turn this over to everybody in case about questions, let me do two things. First is a comment that I'm really excited that this is coming before us. I know myself and many of the commissioners had.
Is that Santa?
It is Santa.
Came by my street for.
All year. But that, I personally was sort of saddened that we had to approve the subdivision when it came before us. I didn't think, I didn't think it made a lot of sense back then. I know we said as much, I felt like our hands were tied a bit at that time. And I think as a planning commission, we made a nice big show of how we were reluctant to vote for this, so that it's sort of come full circle and they've come to some sort of agreement on price that we can now use it for parkland or for schools really excites, excites me. Before, again, so before I turn it over, let me first offer to the public for public comment. Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment. And now let me open up to you guys for comments or questions about the development.
I have a quick question for Paul maybe. Should the city be successful in acquiring the land? Is there ever a concept of unsubdividing? Would there ever be a reason to do that?
That is something that's included in the future steps in the staff report that look through the site planning code. I think there is guidance that when a site plan is submitted for multiple parcels, there is an expectation that a subdivision would be carried out to erase the interior law lines.
Anything?
I have a question. As I recall, in the CIP, the purchase of this land is included? I guess a placeholder for that. How about all of the improvements, the sidewalks, you know, just some kind of swag at really making that into a park if that's the near-term goal on this? Has there been any attempt to estimate what those costs would be?
I don't think there's been an estimate on the public improvement sides of things, whether it's the frontages or the, the interior uses. And part of that is because the use is still flexible in terms of what would be the ultimate design. There was a conceptual design for a park that was included as part of the condemnation suit and included standard suite of amenities, pavilion, walking paths, preserved woodland area, playground equipment. And so I think that could be one of those items to look at as part of the, the planning commission's review of the CIP.
But all that would have to be funded and.
Right.
Well, I think a master park plan had, would have to be developed too, to do any of the stuff inside.
And the biggest problem is all the care for the, all the trees, because some of them are not.
It's just one specimen tree. One specimen tree, according to the staff.
One specimen, but there's so many that are not in good condition. It's really kind of a mess.
There's also a house that would have to be repaired.
Hundred-year-old house.
Yeah, I guess, just.
I, I estimate this has been like 14, 15 years to get here. We almost got it a long time ago.
Yeah, no, it's very exciting. I think. I think it makes sense. It just, it just makes sense. It's proximity to the school, just the need for open space. There's a, I don't see a downside to this. I'm really pleased that the council's taken this action, even though I'm sure it was not inexpensive. And I think these improvements around the outside for the sidewalks and the crosswalks is really important. So I don't know if that's, again, as Mr. Stevens said, contemplate in that price, or if it's, that's something that we have to deal with the CIP. And if it is, I think it's really important that that street is not easily walkable at all on the Parker, I think it is, so.
Yeah, it is, and it's got an embankment and no sidewalk.
Yeah, no, it's not. And cars on it all the time during school hours. All right, if anyone else wants to make a comment, go ahead, but otherwise, I think we're ready for a motion.
Yeah, this is a good thing.
You gonna read it all?
I'm gonna read it all because.
Tell us a story.
I figured you would make me, so I must, I got ready for it.
I did bring a copy though, just in case.
Since Paul came, we have these lovely warehouses now, and it's a so enjoyable to read.
Well, I think it is important to communicate why the planning commission is taking this action. I think it can provide guidance, certainly during development of projects.
Okay, so whereas the city council intends to purchase fellows' property Oak Park subdivision, section 3, for the purposes of parks, open space, or schools, and whereas by chapter 17.07 of the city charter, the planning commission is required to approve or disapprove the acquisition of land. And whereas the city's adopted comprehensive plan, future land use map shows the subject property being used for the intended uses, now therefore I move that the planning commission approve the acquisition of the fellows' property, Oak Park subdivision, section 3, lots 1 through 7, at the addresses of 310 Fellows Carp Court, RPC number 52-206-090, 306 Parker Avenue, RPC number 52-206-091, 304 Parker Avenue, RPC number 52-206-092, 302 Parker Avenue, RPC number 52-206-093, 502 South Oak Street, RPC number 52-206-094, 302 Fellows Court, RPC number 52-206-095, and 304 Fellows Court, RPC number 52-206-096, for the purposes of parks, open space, or schools. I further move that the planning commission and council review the public improvement shown in the ultimate development plan prepared as part of the recent subdivision, which includes construction of sidewalks, curb extensions, and crosswalks along the property frontages, and consider concluding those same developments in public development plans for the property.
Second.
All right. Let's, let's be clear here, Lindy, your name is not on the second list. Brent gotcha. In the record.
Somewhere in that RPC number 52-206.
Any discussion about this motion?
No, this is awesome.
This is a good thing.
There are many opportunities that happened, missed, but this is one that.
This is one where we're getting that.
We're getting, that's good.
And it's a beautiful use of seven columns.
All right, can you take a roll call vote, Mr. Stoddard?
Yes, sir. Mr. Quetzes?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Absolutely.
Ms. Teets?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Odiska?
Yes.
I mean, I wish we could have reversed the subdivision, we had to do a press on the library.
For the record, absolutely means yes. All right, we are, we are moving on to... We're moving on to 7B. These numbers are a little messed up from our earlier adjustment. The original 7B, the planning commissioners' reports. Would anybody like to report on anything?
Tim and I were at the EDC meeting where someone came and spoke about retail and what, why it sometimes is not in demand. And I think the answer was, eh, you know.
It's getting old and needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
I think it was basically, yeah.
Some of our, yeah, some of our older strip centers are having trouble filling, I guess. But he kinda said they're old, so they only.
Which strip centers?
Over by the bike bridge.
Like West End, where, where the Economy Party Store was and.
Carpet store.
It's not doing well.
Yeah, federal, anyway, he basically has a combination of, they're kind of older and.
Expensive.
Things come and go, so. It didn't, I didn't find it to be particularly enlightening, but.
Well, you know, West End isn't kind of a down.
No, but I think Mr. Duncan was kinda looking for some kind of.
I mean, he did.
You need to be doing this and this and this to fill them up. And I think he basically said, you know, it's probably not gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, he, he said what we've all thought, which is if the, I don't know the names of these things, but the one by the bike bridge, if those guys could ever frigging acquire the Rite Aid, then you'd have enough to redevelop something there.
Or the carpet store.
Well, then you'd toss that in there too.
The carpet store just needs to be torn down and repaid.
Well, and they did, I made one good comment. Right now, even though you've got the WNRD trail there, there's.
Yeah, there's no access.
Difficult to access that place.
You can't see it.
I used to do it, but I had to, you know, ride my bike.
Yeah, there's no, and you don't, it doesn't have very good visibility from the street.
Retail visibility is so key. Without visibility, you can be the best thing.
It is so hard.
People are not gonna come, so.
You can't make a left and turn.
Only up down by the party store do they have visibility. The other half, you really don't know what's back there, you have to know what's there.
The traffic right there backs up, so it's hard to do anything.
Yeah, it's only when the party store functions that a lot of people go there and then start to go to road bikes and some of the stuff that's in there.
I think he kind of intimated that it may take until after, you know, it's redeveloped on the other side of the street.
Right, that'll go someday.
There is a very cool escape room on top of that West End now, above the Indian Restaurant, very good one. Sometimes poor, cheap space gets you stuff.
Was anything else brought up in that EDC? Kind of right at that time.
The CACT had a new updated version of Letty Hardy's parking presentation. I don't know, Ms. Stoddard, if you have a copy of it, have you seen that?
I, I can certainly get a copy. The last person I saw was at the VIVIS.
Speaking of parking.
Well, I can send it to you, but I thought if I sent it to you, we could, everyone might wanna see it. It just updated a few more things in it, but.
Well, there's the 10, 10 parking spaces over in Park Towers now.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. That's, so it just, I think she's just, it's a continued work in document, this parking presentation.
That was a good negotiated situation.
Yeah.
Well, I think, if I could interrupt, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think one of the ideas is, is to have a mix of projects going forward at any given time. So you've got private investment in the city, turning over some of these spaces that aren't working anymore for, for one reason or another. Using the, the capital improvements program to, to make really trend-setting investments, like the South Washington Street investment, the Broad Street streetscape efforts that were so successful in the early 90s. Using CIP for those big-ticket items and then using spot improvements to make these functional changes like downtown parking, like the striping that was done at Park in Maple or the Park in Virginia sidewalk that's being popped out. And you have small pieces that need to be reserved or fixed up, going through a spot improvement program instead of the multi-year CIP can be an effective plan.
Right, and the striping's made a difference. Also, you know, I don't know how many people realize it, but across from North Side Social, along Maple, there's 10 public spots that are in the back of the Shinske property.
Right, right, right.
Plus, there's five or six spots that are for that shopping center across the street from Monique and Neko and Doodle Hoppers and all of that. But the sign is really hard to read because it has like a million things listed on it, but that's actually parking for that side too.
We really need to have a different color.
Whenever I park, yeah, whenever I park there, I find spots in those two sections all the time. And I think people just don't see that the trees are there and it kind of, it's like a little dark spot.
Any other reports?
Yeah, just one thing that might be of interest, a kind of work in progress. The company called EV Go won the state contract through some of the VW settlement funds to put charging station infrastructure throughout the state of Virginia. And these are the fast chargers. These are the ones that can recharge a car in half an hour to 45 minutes. So we've kind of reached out and had discussions with them and it's looking so far, you know, like that we could put a couple in the city parking lot that's behind the Claire and Don's, that there's plenty of space there for it and there's no cost to us. It's paid for both in terms of capital and maintenance by EV Go. So anyway, this is kind of work in progress. There's a contract that our city attorney has to look at and share a few other issues here and there. But we had kind of an excellent effort to bring all the parties together, Dominion, the city, appropriate people from the city, and looks, looks positive. I also reached out to the Eden Center and they're also very interested in possibly putting a couple of those charging stations there as well, so more to follow.
And then we always show up at the Sunday sessions, Tim and I do. And I just brought, brought a little bit of that. This is a Lasso magazine with all kinds of articles on development, on Founders Row, on what's going on with the schools, what's going on with commercial development, the library and everything. And the kids have been really interested in getting it, them out. So I know some people have already had it, but I brought some extra copies. They're really well-written and it's just nice to know that the kids are so interested in what's going on. And Peter Newton said yesterday, they've been having different class meetings with, about the school with all the kids. So, you know, the kids are really involved in the, some of the articles are written by the, one of the young men who's liaison or student representative of the EDA. So we've got all kinds of info, so if you want one? I know, this is, this is.
Why do we not have student representatives?
You should read this, I'll tell you.
I tried.
They just come like once a month or something.
No, they come to every meeting.
They, they do, they do, yeah.
Yeah, we've discussed it before and decided that it was not a good fit for our group, but it can be something we revisit. I mean, it's now been along, around for a long enough time that we have some track record. No, they're not a voting member. But we did think it was a big commitment for them and the time and, but we can revisit it on January 14th. All right, let's move. Let's move on to the planning directors' report.
So it'll be a brief report tonight. The, let's see, staff is making good progress on some administrative items as we come into December. It takes time for mid-year annual performance evaluations. I'm happy to say that a lot of positive reports are going out. I have this need to get some of the language in there. I think everyone's doing very well, I think, under some pretty difficult conditions. The temporary city hall, for anyone who's visited it knows that the conditions are a little bit cramped. We were rained out again today, it was a rain day inside. So a lot of us were working from home. I think we've got some pretty good spirits.
What do you mean by rain day inside?
The third floor floods, when there's a rain event, water's coming in the, the window units. But I think.
Good thing this hasn't been the rainiest season ever.
It's been the wettest here on record, I believe.
This weekend won it.
We've got more rain here in Falls Creek than at Reagan. I have a rain gauge in my house. I reported 76 that just rained this calendar year.
We're definitely number one.
And it's all on the third floor.
Fortunately, the group has been making really good use of that, that tech fee that was developed and, and folded into the permitting process a couple of years ago, has been a big benefit to get the group mobile. So laptops, phones, being able to work from home, being able to work from other offices has been a tremendous burden. So I think everyone's in pretty good spirits that even when we're having trouble in the physical space, we're still able to get our work done and be productive.
And I really appreciate that. As I went to 400 North Washington today, 'cause I had dropped something off, and I was like, wow. You guys are working in some tight quarters. I really, really appreciate all the work that's happening there, considering the space.
When will it be over?
The current date that I've heard is March of 2019. There'll be a phased move in. I, I think that's a lesson learned from the move to 400 North Washington, that it's tough to move a lot of people on the same day. You're trying to get network drops set up, you're trying to figure out where everyone's machine went, someone's chair is missing, your file box went where. So I think moving in smaller platoons is a positive step.
And when will we be back at the, our home?
I think it would be about the same time.
Like April meetings maybe, potentially?
What was the reason for the pushback on the substantial completion date?
I think it's a combination of two things. I think it's the construction timeline as well as making sure that project management and the, and the city staff is moving forward as expected. There have been some recent turnovers on the public work side of the house. I, I think, as you may know, Jason Widstrom has now moved over to Arlington County. He's now got a position in their complete streets program, which I think he's very excited about. And James Mack, who is the city's deputy director, has moved over to a position with Lumada, working on electrical, the traction power system. Trains don't run without power, so it's good to have somebody like James working the, through Metro's investments. We've also had some other changes. Chris McGow, the city solid waste manager, has moved on. And so I just, it's just been a number of changes on the public work side and it's made it tough to. And so I just, it's just been a number of changes on the public work side and it's made it tough to, to keep all products moving forward.
So the delay is on Falls Church side, not the contractor's side?
Uh, my understanding is that it is on the construction timeline and keeping pace.
Okay.
And there are.
I'm sure rain didn't help it.
No, they have had a hard time, I'm, I'm sure because of weather. The, um, there are clauses in the contract about performance and timeline. So there will be a conversation about that.
Yeah, no, this is my, this is my business. So I'm just curious.
Weather's not.
Whether, whether it does not quite meet the standard of, okay, just push it back a couple of months.
It rains?
In general, rain can slow down progress.
Of course, yeah, no, that's.
Uh, planning, planning is asking, having so much stuff being put out, Public Works are probably having, are having to deal with it.
Well, you mentioned the downtown park. I think that's actually one of those things, going back to that idea of spot improvements. Uh, the, the staff team for that, uh, actually Jim Snyder and Akita Roosie, uh, along with Kim Callahan, are the, the sort of primary thinking, uh, sort of brain trust, moving that process forward. And so this is an opportunity to work across department lines. I think sometimes there's a sense of, oh, if we're thinking about the future, that's planning. And if we're implementing it, well, that's Public Works. That's not actually a very good model. Um, that you don't want to design something that can't be built, so you need an engineer in the beginning of the project. Uh, and then you don't want to go and build the wrong thing, so you need a planner at the end of the project. And so I think this partnership, uh, of recognizing that it's not a, oh, I'm a planner, oh, I'm a Public Works employee, but no, I'm a city employee. Uh, and so everybody working together regardless of, of title or department, I think that's a positive step.
I worked from home on Friday and I went to Monique and Neko for lunch. And when I went by the downtown plaza, I saw Jim Snyder himself telling the construction workers exactly what he wanted done. He was like this, and you could see him, he was just walking through the whole site with them.
They're always tearing stuff up today.
Yeah, well, I think he, he, they started on Friday and so he was there. It was just, I was going by, I'm like, is that Jim? And he's like telling him what to do.
Well, I think, uh, one of the things is that people are a lot more than their job descriptions. So, uh, John Russell, who's on the city's, uh, building safety side, he was actually the facility manager for Longwood University. And so he actually managed, managed vertical construction projects for Longwood for a number of years. Uh, Jim, uh, uh, back when he was a, uh, professor at Virginia Tech, actually taught an infrastructure program. So when we're talking about the West Falls Church site, one of the things that we're trying to get right from the beginning is, how are you going to lay out your utilities in order to service not only this ten acres that we're talking about, but also the other, uh, twenty that Evan Goldman mentioned in terms of the Womata, uh, uh, property, the Virginia Tech property? And what happens if federal realty, uh, or the Gordon Road trying to come on board? Uh, having this blend of, uh, some level of technical expertise, uh, as well as sort of thoughts about the future blending together in one conversation.
Yeah, I thought that was one of the potential risks he was going to mention, but he did not when I asked him.
The, uh, other things, uh, there was a mention of, uh, charging stations as the department builds up its operating budget for next year. Uh, some of the vehicles that we have, uh, and I think this is a smart idea, we have some of the vehicles for public safety on, uh, lease. Uh, those leases will be coming to term and so we've got an opportunity to, uh, move some of those cars and look at, uh, perhaps using a, a more electric oriented.
Cog has a, um, contract, kind of a.
It's so odd you would know that. Uh, any other, other reports, items for our report?
One thing that I forgot on, uh, six B, the fellow's property acquisition, and that was to give, uh, special thanks to Gary Fuller. Uh, I think, uh, this idea of adding this item as a, as an action for the planning commission came up, uh, in city hall sometime like Tuesday morning, and I think the decision was made by around Wednesday afternoon, uh, to actually add it to the report. And so between, uh, Wednesday afternoon, when we started talking seriously, adding it to the agenda, and Friday afternoon, when we were able to get the materials posted in that short amount of time, uh, Gary was able to do research into the history of the property, uh, the, the requirements for planning commission action, coordinate with the city attorney on the required language, actually pull together the staff report, uh, as well as the attachments from the other reports. So it was really a, a tremendous effort by Gary to put that together and I want to say thanks to him.
Yep.
Uh, the other item, if I actually just bleed into, uh, seven D, the planning library?
Uh, sure. Um, the planning library, uh, I am, I just want to say, uh, I'm really happy that you're going to talk about this. This was something, um, we discussed earlier in this year and, uh, I have talked to Paul on it, about it on numerous occasions outside of these meetings and, and asking where that's at. I take exactly zero credit on this whatsoever, but I am really pleased that, uh, the planning department was able to, uh, make this a reality here before the end of two thousand eighteen. So, um, as you tell us about it, I want to, you know, first say thank you very much for, um, this, this was a priority for me and, and in the background and, and quietly, you, you moved ahead on this and, and, uh, I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Well, you're welcome. This was, uh, I'm glad we were able to deliver this, uh, in the current calendar year. This was one of the planning commission's work plan items, uh, so I'm excited that we're able to cross it off. Uh, some of this is good people do good work. Uh, so Jeff Holleran, who I think, uh, who, with the group has met a couple of times. Uh, Jeff joined the city staff just a few months ago and in that short amount of time, uh, he was able to use some of the skills he was bringing to the city team to reorganize the city's webpages, uh, flesh out descriptions of planning documents, uh, find some of the documents in some cases that there, these documents were, uh, arrayed across the city website, but they didn't always have a common look and feel. They weren't organized in a way that was necessarily intuitive uh, or linked up with the way, uh, conversations about these documents happen. And so, uh, Jeff, uh, was able to pull that together in a fairly short amount of time, coordinate with the city's office of communication to get the webpages reorganized, uh, as well as all the materials loaded and launched. Uh, so the structure of the planning library, uh, is the idea of section. So there's a section for the city's comprehensive plan. There's a section for the city's master plans. There's a section for the small area plans. The speaker series that the planning commission has been holding, one of the ideas behind the speaker series was always to inform not only the planning commission, but, but the community at large. And, and the idea had been out there to actually make these things easier to find. Uh, this planning library actually does that, uh, as well as a place to consolidate all of the studies and reports that go on. Uh, certainly, there's already been planning, uh, for example, for the West End, it was done. There was a, a T L C, uh, transportation land use connection study that was done in twenty seventeen that led to some of the early thinking about the transportation network up there. Uh, and that's something that's worth revisiting, uh, as, um, review of the applications go forward. But other, uh, studies and priorities that have been, um, uh, looked at in the past. It's always good to have those handy. Uh, attached to the report are some screenshots of the planning library. Uh, and you can see it's a very attractive layout, uh, showing, uh, the different sections of the library uh, and then having a consistent look and feel. So each document has a brief description of what's in it and then links to the project page as appropriate and then, uh, of course, the adopted document itself.
Um, again, thank you. Uh, my, my only real comment at this point, uh, and then I'll let you guys comment on it as well, is I'd really like to see this linked to the planning commission page as well. Right now, it's, it's entirely encompassed within the planning department. And I think, um, if people are checking out our agenda and what we're doing that night, that, uh, it's already in place on the planning department. It just needs a, a link. And maybe, you know, we talk about meetings right at the front, but maybe it's even on, on top of that. I think it's a prominent thing, you know, background information for the meetings. I just think there needs to be a link and maybe it's not just a single link. It's a link that says, uh, you know, here it is to the planning, planning library, but also maybe those five categories that you have listed there, that those could be hyperlinked onto the planning commission page. Um, that, that, that's my only request. Other than that, I don't know if anybody else paid any attention to this, but, you know.
No, it looks really great. I guess the only thing I wonder is, should we add another page that links to the zoning code related to development? Just because that's something that's asked by citizens a lot of times, like, you know, how come you can subdivide this property this way or whatever? Like, that way, uh, well, and, and you'll say to them, that's what the code says, and then they'll be like, well, where's the code? And then I have to look it up in Minnesota code. So it might be nice to see what was here.
That's rather daunting.
Well, I can, you can find it.
Yeah, right, but. Might as well make it easier.
The ordinance is the implementation, so the ordinance probably shouldn't be, like, the plan is the plan and then the ordinance is whatever makes it up, so.
Yeah, so just, I would, you have an add page there. Maybe we add that one page. Other than that, it looks really great. And I think it will be really useful because I do get people, well, just like that email I forwarded to you recently, I just, I hadn't noticed it. I saw it. I was like, oh, I wonder if you want to respond it. And just to be able to send that link and go, everything you want to know, you know, about plans is right there. So.
No, I, I couldn't be happier with this. You know, just, it's a, it's a repository for knowledge in the city.
Well, I am happy that we have the framework up, uh, and it, and it seems like everyone is satisfied with the framework. And I think it, there, there are some studies that have been, uh, sort of lost over time. And I think when we can find them, we can put them in a place where everyone will know to go and reference. So I think that's a very positive step as well to recover and lost knowledge and having a place to help prevent it from being lost again.
Right, and, and I think we may end up using it more than, you know, citizens might use it. And, um, and, and this has been true of a lot of things and it's, like, V B S has the same problem. It's one of the reasons why we revamped our website because if we load all the documents on there, we won't lose them. Where before they were in various people's hard drives.
Have a Google Drive, yeah.
We have a Google Drive, too.
Is the plan, for example, it's said that insight, uh, planets, would that be archived?
Yeah, the thought was to have a, a sibling, uh, repository that would be for, uh, so this is really geared toward long-range or future planning. Uh, to have also a sibling geared toward, uh, current or planning or development review projects. Uh, so it would have information about projects and it could probably break them out by, uh, you know, what's, what's open, active and running, what's under review, uh, what's been approved but not under construction yet. So you could get a sense of where are projects in the lifetime.
That would be very helpful because right now, I'm, you know, getting all these piles of paper and it'd be nice just to get rid of them.
Right.
We could also include in there summary information about, uh, uh, fiscal impact, typical development programs, so that people get a sense of how has development been shaped and sized.
I assume the city archives, right? I mean, you guys, when a project is approved, you are, you're archiving the files, I mean, hopefully digitally, or not, does it archive?
When it only goes back.
They're up on the flooded third floor.
Under the window units.
Yeah, that should be something that maybe is a long-term goal for the city. You don't know how you guys, your, your records keeping better, I mean, you know. Because you're by law, you need to keep a lot of that stuff. Everything down to like our minutes, right, needs to be archived and kept.
Yes. Yeah, so we have the required archives. The, uh, that'll actually be a cleanup item for the planning commission early next year is making sure we've got a complete set of minutes for this calendar year. But, um, uh, archiving the files and coming up with a, a more standardized way of, uh, cataloging things. I think that's one of our internal process improvements that we're looking at. That, uh, one of the things that's, uh, great about having more people is that you can get to more work and more projects and more activity. Uh, one of the downsides is that that means you need a better filing storing system than, than, uh, each person individually storing things. So, uh, getting things off of desktops and into shared folders, uh, and then getting them into the same shared folder, getting them with the same template and layout and projects, uh, I think these are all things that we're looking at as we, as we grow and become more sophisticated.
Did you find out that, um, going back, you were, uh, looking for things and it reached a certain point where stuff wasn't there?
We can always find things, uh, and sometimes the information doesn't have to be in-house. Uh, there was, uh, there was a two thousand eight corridor study for South Washington Street. Uh, and we were having trouble finding it internally, but it was a, a council of governments, a cog study. And so we actually just reached out to cog and, and they, of course, had a copy archived. So we were able to get that and we'll be able to push that up on the planning library as well.
Uh, so the question is now to me, how do we market this? Um, and, I mean, it's obviously not taking out ads in the newspaper about this, but I think maybe it's something like, uh, it goes on our agenda. Um, it's something that, you know, when we put out some, you know, some documents or in, uh, in, in advance of a issue that we know is going to have a lot of public, um, involvement, that there is some reference to it. I would, I would like it not to just be us in this room and, and all the fans watching at home, um, watch, uh, that are aware of it. I, I think it's something that should be, you know, a footer for maybe a, a six-month timeframe or a year that says, check out the planning library or something like that. Just small little things so that people are aware that it's there. And anything else we can do, um, I will make a, uh, I take that back. Um, whoever's making the presentation to city council about our year in review, I think should mention this, put it in that forum, say one of the, one of the, this is one of the accomplishments, uh, and just get it out in that forum, something like that. Because I think these kind of things are important. That's, that's really, it's for the public, not just for us, so.
I'll also say it's for staff's benefit. I know, um, uh, there have been times when there were community conversations about why a project looked one way or another and finding a place to store that, uh, so that there is a sense of institutional knowledge that, that even as staff turns over, uh, there's an opportunity to save that information and make it easy to find.
Look, I hope it's a living library. I mean, I hope, I, I think Mr. Stevens' comment's a good one as well. That, you know, as we have big projects, there's a, there's a repository for exactly this, the storytelling of how we got here. And, and not, not necessarily a narrative about it, but more just, these are the documents that, that you could follow through and say, here's the history of this, of this, this big event and, and, uh, here's how you find out the information. Without having to go to every single meeting minute and try to figure out, you know, what those downloads are, so. Thank you again. I really, really appreciate it. Uh, anything else on the planning library? All right, let's go to correspondence.
Uh, correspondence is always, is not intended to be a, a discussion item. It's, it's for the planning commission's information. Uh, included in correspondence, uh, for tonight's meeting, there was the invite that was previously forwarded for the event that happened yesterday. Uh, this was the Sunday series on the West Falls Church project. And then, uh, uh, two items, they were status updates on the city council's items. The, uh, the city council work plan, uh, which is a two and a half year work plan, as well as the, uh, the C I P update, which is, uh, these documents are generally updated on a quarterly basis. Uh, sometimes it skips a quarter, but this is the most recent set of reports.
All right.
I was just, excuse me, I was just wondering, I didn't have a chance to really look at the, the two, uh, reports from, uh, the planning commission and the city council, but I was wondering how they were balancing out and stuff, and, you know, and being good for each other.
There's a pretty heavy degree of overlap. Uh, if you look through the city council's work plan, uh, I think what you'll see is that oftentimes a lot of the work, uh, for these sort of change agents versus, and that's really what the council's work plan is focused on, is these things that are going to adjust city policy or, or reinvest or redevelop the city. Um, a lot of them, uh, fall either on Public Works in terms of implementing, uh, civil infrastructure, uh, uh, community planning and economic development services in terms of policy updates. Uh, so for things like the West Falls Church site, the, uh, uh, smaller area planning process, the comprehensive plan updates, uh, these are things that are of course of interest to both council and planning commission. In general, the schedules for, for target delivery dates line up, but, but not always.
You good? I said yes. Um, all right, uh, now we're on to work session items and, uh, these are, uh, these are going to be led by you, Mr. Stoddard.
Sure. Uh, thank you. Uh, so commissioners, the intent is not to necessarily have these discussions tonight, but certainly that is possible. Uh, instead, the idea is to seed the conversation in order to have a, a productive, uh, and fairly.
Yeah, my view is that.
Directed conversation.
We're ready, we're ready for the fourteenth of January, as, just, you know, you tee it up and then we have a chance to review them.
So the items in the packet, uh, first, the service survey, uh, this is a look back at twenty eighteen. Uh, and the idea is for staff to have a chance to, uh, be evaluated, uh, that, uh, the service that you all are receiving from the planning staff and the rest of city staff, is that what you all need in order to be an effective public body? And so there are, uh, sets of questions dealing with staff reports and package materials, uh, how the meetings are organized and set up. Uh, and then also the pace of work that the planning commission is able to accomplish. Is it, is it satisfactory to the group? Uh, or is the group looking to achieve more? Uh, and of course, answers to these questions could be used either to, um, advocate for resources, uh, run meetings differently, reduce services, increase services, refocus efforts. Uh, all those things are, are possible opportunities coming out of this.
I noticed there was no name on it as the intent, that this is anonymous. Or would you like us to?
I think, uh, what I was, uh, what I had intended was that these planning commissioners would go ahead and send in the materials and that way staff could, could prepare a, a synopsis and distribute it as part of that January fourteen package. Um, but if the desire is for, uh, an anonymous survey, we could certainly set that up as well.
Oh.
I mean, if you're okay with it saying strongly disagreed all the way down by my name, that's fine.
That's fine. I think that's just an invitation for coffee.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. So do you have a deadline that you'd like us to turn this in by so you can process it?
Uh, I think at the calendar year would be fine.
The fourteenth, the fourteenth of five P M. Yeah, if you could, uh, send a reminder, that'd be great.
We respond to nudges.
All right. The, uh, annual work plan.
So the annual work plan, this is something that the planning commission developed during their annual advance, I think that was in March, we said earlier, and it laid out a program of work in a number of areas, West Falls Church being the number one priority item for the group, current planning, development review, development applications, zoning ordinance and future land use map updates, comprehensive plan updates, three chapters active, and then I fudged the answer a little bit on this transportation, well, the idea was to have an innovation panel and speaker series, and I just took credit for all the speaker series that had been held to date, so I was focusing on innovation and less so on transportation. And so what's in the middle columns was the delivery schedule that was developed as part of the advance, and then what's in the far right column is the status of each of those items. I think the overall story is one of success in the sense that a lot of things are complete or on schedule, especially when you're looking at some of those higher priority items. Even lower priority items still had a substantial amount of work, whether it was exactly as intended in March is open to question, but there is positive progress on a lot of these things and opportunities for follow-up action. I think there are some items highlighted in red, and those were items that the group wanted to advance this calendar year, but an opportunity didn't really present itself.
It never will for Greenway Downs.
Greenway Downs?
I spoke to a couple council people about Greenway Downs, because I feel like it's the one thing we really should get done, and they were really interested in it, and I said, it really depends on your schedule, can we get it on your schedule? I said, because we, but, and then I guess we have to do the outreach again.
Yeah, I think the community conversation and a lot of consensus building and probably some tweaks to the draft ordinance, and I think that's always the issue is, for example, even the text amendment with the, that was relatively straightforward regarding intellectual disabilities, the language regarding intellectual disabilities, I think that took about four months to move through.
Right, I mean, I understand that, but I think this is a win-win for the council, because they could be doing something that a whole lot of citizens would get a positive out of, and it's not really a negative on anyone else.
So just so I'm clear on this, Paul, because every year, multiple times, we talk about it, it sounds like it's not just as simple as getting on the city council calendar, it's the staff time needed to do the outreach, tweak the language. So if this were ever to happen, what would be the next step?
Well, one that I had a personal experience with was the Paper Streets update, that we had had some conversations with the CACT, the Rocco Parks, with the planning commission, and the advisory group seemed to think it was a pretty good idea, went up to council, and they had some legitimate questions about how would adjacent property owners be affected, how many people really know about the impacts on their properties, and we said, well, we, as staff, kind of held the community meeting in, and so the response was, oh, go hold the community meeting. And there just wasn't the bandwidth in-house to actually coordinate, advertise, hold, respond to a community meeting, and so once that was the direction, it just went to the bottom of the list again. And so I think if we were to do that, we would have to go through those same sets of boards and commissions to refresh knowledge, make any tweaks that were necessary.
I mean, we thought it was more than 14th, but see, that's a, you know, that's a structural problem, and it winds up, you know, we spent a lot of time on that, and then other people do too, and if it's going to die for lack of staff resources, maybe that's a budget issue, maybe it's another thing, but, you know, obviously between, you know, you and Jim making priorities for the year, I mean, there are different factors that weigh in, I suppose, but, and that's a, seems to be a problem that's been occurring over the years, and it's not like a new problem, it seems to be, you know.
Well, that's what I'm trying to really pin down.
Right.
That's unfortunate, and it winds up wasting our time, I think, you know, we spent a lot of meetings talking about that, even the Paper Streets thing, we spent a while talking about that.
Right.
Well, and...
Actually, that was second or third time around.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and one of my concerns is, like, we got this all the way to the finish line, and then it didn't get through, the Greenway Downs thing, and now it all has to be restarted. Well, we shouldn't, we should, even if we had the staff time, it wouldn't make sense to restart it unless we had some way of knowing that it would get to the end. But my point is that, I mean, I agree it's a problem, but like, what is literally the next step if it were to move forward? It sounds like somebody would have to decide that it deserves staff time. Who, is that Wyatt, is that Jim, is that city council giving that guidance?
So I think one of the reasons for doing this exercise of looking at where we got is to get a sense of what is the bandwidth of the group. I think in the council's work plan, one of the things that was pretty interesting about this year is the formation of this year's work plan for council, is that staff took a look at the previous two work plans and asked questions, how many items were on the work plan, how many did you substantially complete? And regardless of the number of items on the work plan, about 30 got completed. And so I think this may be one of the first retrospective looks at the planning commission's work plan, and so the question is, how many items can you squeeze through the planning commission's 24, maximum 24?
Right, but this is a great example, we could have squeezed this one through, this, we weren't the bottleneck on this one.
No, Greenway Downs went all the way through.
If we were, then someone should have told us, it sounds like we were more than happy to take it up in any meeting. So I don't, I appreciate that look, but it still doesn't answer the question of what is the next step that had to happen.
Oh, I think the next step for both of these would be to have one community meeting to go back and answer that question from council, to say, did you meet the community, what were the discussion points, and how did you react, and I think it's a fairly straightforward...
And then, and then, but would it make sense to go to city council, like, okay, if we do that, and this is the answer, will it, you know what I'm saying, like, I don't want to do that, and have them be like, oh, great, great, okay, cool, cool, and then a year later, it's gone stale, they haven't done anything with it, and then they tell us to do it again.
Oh, I don't, I don't know that you ever know, right? Right, the HESI plan is a great example, it was three years, and everyone thought it was great, and then the community meeting was held in the community center, and...
All right, so it sounds like if we really want to move it forward, we push you guys, I don't actually care, but I just find it annoying that we sit here and we talk about it so much, but we never actually do the legwork to figure out how to actually move it forward, we just love to complain about it. So to me, it sounds like next year, if this is important to us, which we'll decide later, we hound you in every meeting to schedule this meeting, then once that happens, we hound council to make sure they take action before the meeting results go stale.
One thing we talked about in the advance, the planning commission's advance, was identifying a champion planning commission member, so as a community meeting is held, have a member of the planning commission at the meeting to be the advocate, to be the spokesperson for it, so it's not perceived as staff has dreamed up this idea and pushing it on everybody. It's, no, there's been a conversation, staff is helping us with the mechanics of it, but this is what we want to achieve. I think one strategy that might be good is to put one zoning update on the work plan and see what happens. I think internally, we were trying to have discussions about how do we keep all three of these moving forward, and we could move all of them, and so in some ways, getting one right, learning the formula for it, I think some of this goes back to the work of the ZOAC committee, the zoning update committee, there were a lot of good ideas, the pie was so big that no one could take on the whole thing, so instead, break it up, advance one, get in the habit of updating the zoning ordinance, and making these changes that people think are a good thing, and add them there.
I still think there's a situation that when it gets up to the top, when the mayor and the city manager is deciding what goes on, you know, onward and forward, I think Greenway Downs was cut out. And because of fear of so many difficulties with it.
Yeah, so that's a good example, if that's true...
And we should have not realized that or been told that before.
Yeah, so if that's true, it'd be great to have gotten that feedback, so that next time we put it on our list, we know, like, well, this is not going to go anywhere unless those issues are resolved, so it's not just go have a meeting and, you know what I mean, like, I, again, I don't actually care that much about this issue, I care about our inability to actually execute on a plan.
Sure, there's a, I mean, there's a process for this called stakeholder analysis, where you lay out their discharge, and you say, okay, who are all the folks that are involved, what are their issues that they're concerned about, does the process or the product know anything?
Was there anyone opposed to Greenway Downs? We didn't sign that one?
Apparently.
Well, the public wasn't, the public was happy, we had gone, reached out to all the groups, we did all our things, we had one work session with council before the public stuff, and then we were trying to schedule a second work session to go to first read-in, and it was around budget time, and we just, they couldn't fit us in for months, and then it just kind of languished. And so, no, nothing was conveyed to us from staff that was a particular reason why we didn't get a work session with council, other than the schedule was full. And so it wasn't, it wasn't a priority, so therefore it didn't go on the schedule.
We were, one of the things that made the recent comp plan update successful is that we danced it through the meeting schedule, that you don't want to do major things in the summer, you don't want to do things during the budget votes, and so structuring things around those council meeting dates was an effective way to get those comp plan updates through, knowing what dates you have to hit, and then being willing to set other things aside and being late on other projects to hold those dates.
It's almost really like, the only good time dealing with council is September, October, November, until Thanksgiving, because the spring is very budgety, they don't want to do big things in the summer, they don't want to do big things in December, January, and so it's really like we're in this window where if we want, we have to keep, we have to get it set up so that it hits them in September, if we really want to get something non-budget, non-big project, like big development project, that's, other than that, it's not going to go. And so, I mean, I'm sure the staff recognizes that.
There are strategies.
Yeah.
You also want to watch for election years.
Well, that's true.
Oh, yeah, because nothing is, anything is this.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, let's move, let's try to wrap this up in four minutes.
Four minutes, very good.
We're on to the annual report to council.
Yes, so again, good work. This is the work of Shana Schaefer, one of the things she brought to the city was some pretty sophisticated skills with InDesign. This is substantially the same information that the group has seen in the past, but it's been dressed up with graphics from recent projects, things going around in the city, captures of the planning commission in action.
Speaking, but no one's listening.
Well, in action, and...
You are holding court, Tim, I mean, look at, Lindy's holding her head, she's like, on, this must be an environmental comment here.
Brett is in one spot in one picture and a different spot in the next one.
Because they can't move it as back and forth.
Rob, you're attentive, well done.
There's a section in the back that's left for you all to complete on the 14th, and that is priorities that you want to communicate to council. This has been a pretty effective tool that the CACT has started using in recent years, that when they make the annual report to council, they come with, you know, a top five or top seven list, whatever it is, things where they think city should be moving. It's how they were effective in getting the parking day event, it's how they've made some noise about adjusting speed limits on residential streets, it got the play streets effort going, it's gotten continual funding for neighborhood traffic home, so having that shortlist where you need support from council, maybe it is on zoning updates, scheduling those in a timely fashion, whatever it happens to be. There is a correction that was identified, thank Commissioner Stevens, it's on page eight, and it has to do with the votes and the SOKENS and the firsts for the various motions related to the zoning tax update.
Yeah, well, that's why, Lilith was just looking at the back too.
Okay.
Last item is the rules of procedure, I've gone through these, I think what happens to documents over time, you see this everywhere, that things get added to address particular issues that are going on, and then when you look back at the totality of it, it's become a document that's become somewhat unyielding, so things go through this period of expansion over time and then contraction back to the core needs, and so that's what I was highlighting here in some of the comments.
The accordion effect.
Yes, of what does the planning commission really need to include in its rules of procedure, and what I was noticing was a little bit of confusion where it was quoting pieces of code, I think that can lead to some confusion about what is the prevailing document, and of course, that's code, not the rules of procedure.
Yeah, I mentioned this a little bit on the third, that this was coming, I don't know if you had sent it out by the third, or I just had mentioned that I had talked to you and read your comments. As you go through this, much of this needs to be rewritten and shortened, so if we're, you know, using this accordion analogy, we need to bring it way back in, we are at 20-some-odd pages here, 26 pages, and this thing could be probably half that size. The, I mean, I've been on the commission for 10 years, so I'm definitely play a role in this, but sort of got a little full of ourselves in terms of what we need to put in our rules and procedures, as opposed to letting the, you know, the actual documents do what they were supposed to do, we just kept throwing it in here and throwing it in here, and it's time to make some big adjustments. So you'll see, almost the whole document is highlighted by Paul that says, delete superfluous.
Not all the purple's delete, some of it's...
No, 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 no.
Some of it is review, I think there are some good, I think this is, you know, the rules of procedure, one of the things I look at is, is this helping citizens engage and understand the important work that the planning commission's been doing, and understand how to communicate with the group, and what is in the planning commission's...
Helping some standards of procedure, I think, is good.
Need, absolutely.
It gives people consistency and what they know to expect, and the role of the commission.
Yeah, it just, we just, I mean, we've just covered it, it's just gone, gone, it needs a few minutes of review. Normally, we just, we start off and say, yeah, it looks good, why, nothing's really changed in the past year, I think it makes sense to address this on the 14th, so.
One of the things that I really like, and I'll just throw out as an example of how the rules of procedure can be very helpful, actually, in the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, one of the things in their bylaws is that it stipulates when they're building subcommittees, they're supposed to try and achieve a mix of representatives from jurisdictions inside the Beltway, outside the Beltway, large jurisdictions, small jurisdictions, so the idea is that you're empowered to set up subcommittees, and so think about how you want to set up subcommittees, or, you know, when you're reviewing land use applications, what are the priority issues that you guys want to tackle, or how do you want to go about some of these things?
Yeah, again, I really appreciate the review by yourself and the staff to get us here and have a meaningful discussion on the 14th about it, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else we got on our agenda? I do not see anything.
Just adjournment.
Just adjournment, anyone else, anyone wants to talk about? All right, we're adjourned.
Yeah.